The meeting is called to order if we would all rise and pay attention to Councilman Jensen for the invocation, and we will be following with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my privilege to introduce Pastor Jane Roots from Westminster Presbyterian Church in College Hill.
Thank you. Where do you want me? Stand right up here?
Yes, ma'am, on the podium.
Oh, stand at the podium. I'm sorry. I'm back to you all. So, thank you first of all for inviting me. I'm from Westminster Presbyterian Church in College Hill. I'm brand new. I don't look brand new, but I've been here for eight months in this fabulous city. I came from El Paso, Texas, so a little bit of change in many ways. I'm involved in the church and organizations called Topeka Peace and Justice, Jump, and Envita. So, thank you for inviting me. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings to all of us. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, in particular today for our city council, and all the leaders gathered today. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what they are doing is good and fitting and compassionate, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in the tasks set before each and every one of them. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Topeka. We ask this in your most blessed name, I pray, and let everyone say, "Amen." Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed to presentations. City Manager Trout.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have asked Bill Cochran, Chief Cochran, to do a presentation to help inform the governing body and the public in regards to the amount and type of training that the Police Department conducts each year. He will also discuss some community engagement activities he's involved in and the department's involved in, and outline some of our recruitment efforts that we have that are ongoing. Chief Cochran?
City Manager, Mayor, and the governing body. Here tonight, just to give you a little update on the Topeka Police Department, kind of a state of the city, shall we say, for the agency. First of all, Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center is what governs law enforcement in the state of Kansas, and the Basic Academy down in Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center in Hutch comprises of 572 hours. We run our own academy here in the city of Topeka, and our academy is 912 hours. So, as you can see, we almost double what's required by the state of Kansas here by the Topeka Police Department. Some of the things that we also train and educate our officers on above and beyond Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, we do cultural awareness training, hate-based crime training, as well as interpersonal communication. We do quite a few more hours than is required by the Basic Academy in Hutchinson. One of the other things that we're really proud of is our Crisis Intervention Team Program, which is our Behavior Health Training that we do, works on de-escalating individuals who are in mental health crisis, diverting them from the criminal justice system and putting them into services that are needed. That's not a requirement by Kansas Law Enforcement Training Standards, but it is part of our Basic Academy. Again, that's 40 hours that concentrates on those type of training. It's part of the Basic Academy, so every officer that I hire goes through it, will get it. But we also have a total of 152 officers trained on our department, and currently we're standard at about 270 officers, so we have quite a few that are trained. We also teach command Spanish in our Basic Academy, which is to give our officers the ability to communicate on a basic level in Spanish to work through situations that don't require a translator. But again, that is training that's not required by Kansas, but something that we do at our academy, and we've been doing it for many years. The Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center requires 40 hours of in-service training for an officer every year. We mandate 48, so we're another eight hours above that. And so, the other thing that's very interesting I'd like to point out is that beyond the 40 hours that is required for one of our officers, we trained another 10,174 hours. So, that's a lot of training that our officers are receiving above and beyond the minimum requirements as far as succeeds a lot of agencies in the state of Kansas. We also have a lot of instructors that are recognized throughout the nation and actually travel and go around and present on behalf of the Topeka Police Department. One of my big things is education. One of my endeavors is to make sure that we have a command staff that is qualified, trained, and ready to take over at the next level. And so, currently, we have 17 members of our department with associate's degrees, 87 with bachelor's, and we have eight with master's. And as of last week, we now have one with a PhD. So, we have a pretty qualified staff, I think, at the Topeka Police Department. We also provide a supervisor training above and beyond all the other training, and my vision for that is to expand that to 16 hours this year, and that will include picking up hours in culture competency and awareness training, as well as more training from HR. One of the things that we did here, feedback from our supervisors was, when they went through the eight-hour training, that they would have liked to have a lot more training on HR issues and how to handle those. So, we're going to expand that to 16 hours from eight. These are some of the community youth programs that we have going on. One that we're really excited about is the OK Program, which is run out of Eisenhower Middle School, which focuses on African-American youth. It's a mentorship program and giving them life-saving skills and social skills. Well, we're going to expand those endeavors come next school semester. At Chase Middle School, we're going to launch a Latino-based endeavor that focuses on Latino youth that go to Chase Middle School. The one thing about this program, though, this will be our own program, it's not a patented program, so this program will be inclusive of all the students that go to Chase Middle School and state elementary. So, we're really excited about that endeavor. These are some of the community engagement programs that we're involved in. We have a very vital, vibrant Citizens Academy and Ambassador's Program. But again, I think one of our flagship things is that Behavior Health Unit that we launched last year. It's a full-time unit that has certified counselors that can do screenings in the field. They're employees of LAO Behavior Health, and they work out of the law enforcement center on a daily basis, and they work with the officers day in and day out. So, really excited about that program, and that's one program that we do look at expanding in the near future. We have a lot of recruitment efforts going on, but one of the things I think I'm most proud of is just recently we did a virtual job fair with soldiers from the Kansas Army National Guard that are deployed in Afghanistan and Iraq, but a virtual job tour, a job fair from right here in Topeka. There was four other employers, some of our major ones here in Topeka were involved in that. Pretty successful, but it's one of those things, a lot of times when guard members deploy, they're gone for a year or so. A lot of those individuals end up quitting their jobs or whatever, and then when they come back, they need employment. So, one of the things that we're doing is trying to reach out to them before they return home, get that seed planted. But again, it's not just for law enforcement. We've expanded that for the Fire Department and other city... Agent... Departments, that's the word I was looking for, other departments. So, we're really excited about that. So, it's just not a law enforcement endeavor. We're trying to open it up for the whole city, and recruiting for the city, I think, is important across the board. And some of our other recruiting efforts, there's 20 community colleges in the state of Kansas, 25 four-year colleges, there's three major military installations. And so, one of the things that we are doing is taking our recruiting efforts on the road, doing testing and doing the physical agility test at those sites, get people involved and start getting them in the process a lot of it. And so, it's really opening up our recruiting pool. We did that for the first time in November at Fort Riley, and we're very optimistic that in our class that we're going to have in April, we're going to have 15 to 20 recruits in there. And of those, about 10 of those came out of that recruiting effort, one recruiting effort to Fort Riley. So, really excited about the future recruiting efforts that we have going on. Our recruiting efforts have been recognized by IACP, and we've been asked to speak at the National Conference in 2017 about our recruiting efforts, recognized nationally because our recruiting efforts have been so aggressive and innovative that it's taken a lot of agencies across the United States by surprise. They've been contacting us, wanting to know what we did, how we're making it work, and all that other stuff. So, a lot of great things going on as far as that goes. One of the initiatives that we really got started in mid-December was a gun violence initiative, and it's a three-pronged approach, which I rolled out. It includes education, community enforcement. You guys have it, you've seen that already, but that the education piece of it is educating the public not only on what we're doing, but also working with our school youth all the way from elementary through high school, and developing programs to get into the schools to do that. The interesting thing or the unique thing about that is that the high school level, we are actually using students to come up with the program, what they think they need, what's important, and so we're helping them develop that program and helping them go to roll that out. So, really excited about that. And we talked about the community investment, the Center for Peace and Justice, working with them to come up with initiatives and how do we get the word out there, and then also for the Center for Empowerment and Safety, working with them closely on how to help reduce violence in domestic situations. And then, of course, the enforcement efforts that we got going on. Beyond that, one of the things that I have planned is a major reorganization within the Police Department. Currently, we have fill operations, criminal investigations, and support operations, and one of the things that I'm working on is support operations is going to be phased out. We're going to come up and initiate a Community Outreach Bureau, and so we're going to be really focusing on community endeavors and enhancing all those efforts there. So, really excited about that. And we plan on rolling that out about July 1st, when we go into our new shift bid process, and so we'll have that in place by then. And then, to... We talked a lot about training already, but one of my main focuses is to turn Topeka into a regional training facility for eastern Kansas. We have a tremendous training academy. If you haven't been out there, I would love to get you guys together and give you a tour and all that other stuff so you could see that facility, but start hosting. We host a lot of trainings already, but we've been in a lot of contact with a lot of different organizations across the United States, going to bring in top-level, high-quality training that we're very excited about, and so we're really getting a lot of that launched, and that'll be really taking a lot of traction come July timeframe. So, that's, you know, kind of where we're at at the Police Department and where we're headed, so with that.
Thank you very much, Chief Cochran. Does the body have any questions or comments? Councilwoman, clear.
Thank you for this. This allows me to answer some questions when I'm asked, and I'm very excited to see that we only want top-notch people and that we train them to be so. But thank you.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, sorry for coughing through your presentation. I am on the tail end of this thing.
Me, too.
I've heard that recruiting is pretty difficult because of the boundaries of Shawnee County, the limitations that we put on ourselves for recruiting within the county, or you have to live here, I think, to be employed here, so... Do you think if that was lifted and we expanded into other counties around our county that we would have better recruitment class in the future?
Well, I think there's several issues when it comes to recruiting difficulties, and I think you can point to several across the board if you wanted to. I think recruiting just across the board in this country and the current era that we are in, it's difficult to recruit law enforcement officers. And so, boundaries are living here or there. I don't know if that's necessarily a huge constraint on us. I think you can find quality people. We've got to find quality people, which we're doing. Like I said, the recruiting efforts are very good. I'm very impressed with the efforts that our members have done, and so I feel very confident that with whatever we have to deal with, we're going to overcome that, and I feel we're going to be very successful. By this time next year, I feel very confident where we're going to be.
Councilman Padilla.
Chief, thank you for your presentation. A couple of things caught my eye because I've always had an interest in this, and that was the Community Outreach Officer and the development of a Community Outreach Bureau. Can you give me just a quick thumbnail of how that will work within your agency and how that meshes with everything else?
Yeah, the Community Outreach Officer is something that I've been working on for about a year, but now being in a position where I can implement it, we have moved forward with it. What that officer is, is going to be a liaison for all citizens at Topeka, kind of a central person that they can contact if they have questions or if they have issues, if they're a victim of a crime, or family members are a victim of a crime, this is a central person that they can call, and it's going to be that officer's responsibility to try to find the answers and get them the answers, and also be that liaison in critical incident situations, you know, whether that's a suicide, a homicide, or what have you. But that officer's going to be very active, engaged, and we've already started utilizing that officer in our position. The Community Outreach Bureau, the whole premise behind that is to bring all these community engagement efforts that we have going on within the Police Department currently under one umbrella with a lot more focus, and so we can get more down to the grassroots effort, dealing with those individuals, working with those individuals that on a day-in-and-day-out basis live in these neighborhoods and kind of do community policing driven, not from a law enforcement perspective, but driven from a community perspective. I don't know what your community needs, and so it doesn't make sense for me to tell you what your community needs. And so, we want to engage the community members at that grassroots effort, see what they need, what can law enforcement do for them. It may not be a law enforcement matter, but we may be the conduit to get you the right answer. And so, that's kind of what changes this perspective of community policing from police-driven activities to community-driven activities.
Thank you for that explanation.
Anybody, Mayor Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, a lot of the neighborhoods I represent have, I think, they're quasi-dedicated community policing officers. Will that program still exist to some degree? I ask because a lot of them, they have worked very hard to build good relationships with their point of contact, and they really like working with them. Is that...
Yeah, and actually, their efforts are going to be enhanced. One of the things that I want to see is our community officers be community officers for that community. And one of the things that in the past, law enforcement being what it is, they work with the community, then they get information, and then they actually know they're serving a search warrant on that. I want our community officers to be community officers where community members can trust them.
Excellent.
And if there's information that needs passed on, they pass it on to another unit within the department to do whatever follow-up or whatever needs to take place.
Excellent. That program has been hugely successful in the area I represent. They really like having that one-on-one interaction that's consistent with a particular police officer.
Yeah, the community officers' efforts and what they do for the agency, what they do for the city of Topeka is absolutely not short of amazing, and the contacts and the information that they get and deal with and work with individuals in the community on a daily basis is awesome.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the chief? Councilman Lesser.
Real quick, Chief. Thank you for this. Very, very well done, and I'm just so very pleased so far with the job that you're doing and really happy to have you leading our troops. Question for you. Are you going to be around the rest of the meeting? We have a couple of discussion items, and I do have some questions that may want your input on.
Yes, sir, I'll be here.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
One last thing on all the training that I did mention. I think it's very important to realize that in law enforcement, especially at the Topeka Police Department, when we talk about all those training hours that our officers are doing and all the extra training, almost every part of that training includes some type of de-escalation training wrapped into it and involved in it. So, like, when our officers go to the range, they don't just shoot for eight hours. There's a whole lot of training that goes into shoot, don't shoot, de-escalation, and that carries on through almost every aspect of training that we do.
That did prompt a question that I had. Chief, do you have situational training that goes along with that?
In every part of the training that we do, there is situational training that is tied to that. So, when we talk about bias-based policing, we talk about a scenario-based training with that and de-escalation with it. That's kind of a just a foregone conclusion anymore, especially at the Topeka Police Department and all the training that we do. De-escalation has been something that we have been, we've worked on for many years, and now it's just commonplace that anytime a training is presented, there's a de-escalation piece in it.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments, we're about to proceed with the roll call. However, before we go to the roll call, I will let you all know that our system is not working, so as we go through the votes tonight, we're going to have to go old-school and raise our hand. Hi. So, the city clerk could go ahead and see you. We proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLayfa?
Here.
Councilmember Killer?
Here.
Mayor Ortiz?
Emerson?
Here.
Dea?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
Councilwoman Ortiz is homesick, and we wish her speedy recovery. We now proceed with the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $18,488.25 for Kenneth Jones for an injury sustained while engaged in normal work duties. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Heller approving a special event known as the 2018 St. Patrick's Day Street Parade. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Heller granting the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise provisions. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Heller granting Faith Family Life Center an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise provisions. E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of December 2, 2017 through December 29, 2017, and enumerating said expenditures therein, or minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2018, and there are no applications.
Hearing the agenda, do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Council Emerson moves to approve. Councilman Padilla, seconds. All in favor, say, raise your right hand. I'll oppose, same sign.
So, we have nine yes.
Motion passes. We now proceed to the action items. I will defer to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to notification today, Councilmember Ortiz has an item that she would like to amend the governing body rules and procedures tonight, but with her absence, she's unable to submit that amendment. So, she's requested, and I have agreed, to pull this item from discussion for tonight, consideration tonight, and move it to next week's agenda. Hopefully, she's well by then, and we can consider them. Didn't feel that we were in that big of a rush, and so that will allow us time for her amendment to be submitted next meeting.
We proceed with B, labor agreement.
B is approval of a three-year labor contract effective January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2020, between the City of Topeka and United Workers and Environmental Trades of Topeka, representing employees of the Water Pollution Control Utility Division.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The WPC contract is presented tonight for your consideration. Human Resources Director Jackie Russell will review the tentative agreement terms.
Good evening, governing body. I have a little voice tonight, so I'll do my best to get through this. Some of the major highlights of this three-year tentative agreement are that we have tried to make a language clarification with our grievance and arbitration procedures to address business days and clarify that. It was days, and it's confusing. Some other highlights are that we revised the discipline and discharge section of the contract to make sure that we were providing clarification to ensure compliance with all state and federal and city policies concerning carrying weapons. The area of emergency lead workers was clarified to provide that pay is for after-hours overtime work, not only when an emergency is declared, but any outside-of-normal-hours work. The interim probationary period was clarified to provide that anytime an employee changes from one position classification to another, there is a one-year, I'm sorry, a six-month probationary period. So, what that means is if someone moves from Equipment Operator 1 to Equipment Operator 2, they would serve a six-month probationary period to demonstrate proficiency in that We added eligibility requirements for promotions so that it's not just a seniority-based system. We clarified the healthcare benefits are covered by a separate memorandum of understanding, which all of the seven unions enter into. We spent a large amount of our time implementing a wage comparability study to get wages in line with comparable organizations in our region. In addition to that, we also were able to implement a competency-based incentive where there are identified competencies where employees will move from one classification to another when they achieve those competencies. We also, they move annually on their anniversary. They receive a performance pay adjustment with meets expectations improvement only. So, if they're not meeting expectations, they would not get that step movement within their grade. For those individuals that are at the top of the range that do meet expectations on their annual performance evaluation, they will receive a $250 one-time lump sum bonus in 2019 and a $500 one-time lump sum bonus in 2020. And the last major thing I wanted to point out is that we did revise the employee development for providing for $1,000 of tuition reimbursement, and that is in line with our current city policy for tuition reimbursement to encourage advanced education. The financial impact over the three years for the stormwater is a 1.3% increase and a 0.6% increase to the wastewater. The union has ratified this contract, and so we feel that this is a good contract that moves in the direction that management wants to see the organization versatility of our workers, and we would recommend your approval this evening.
Thank you, Jackie. Does anybody in the body have any questions, comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion for approval? You have a question? It's the Councilman Lesser.
I'm sorry, I did have a question, and please forgive me. As you know, I'm new to this process, so if I'm not doing this at the right place, I apologize. I had reviewed it. I knew that since one of the variety of the changes where we're in Article 5 of the discipline and discharge portion of it, I did have a couple of questions in regards to, can you tell me what, under C, offense is not normally considered serious enough to warrant immediate suspension or termination? Can you give me a little bit of the thought process? There's a few things in here that, for instance, four, absence without permission or proper notice, six, using city vehicles or property and equipment for personal use, and seven, consistent and continual unavailability for work. My question is, I'm just a little curious on why those items that would there be listed would not be rise for immediate suspension if someone just doesn't show up for work or takes the city car to a personal trip to... or takes the city car to a personal trip to Lawrence or Kansas City? I'm, I'm, I'd like some clarification.
I can tell you that those particular provisions precede my involvement with the labor agreement, but it is not an uncommon provision that you would see in most of our labor agreements for those sorts of things to fall under the progressive discipline. That is many times situational, so you're gonna look at the situation. So for example, availability for work, if they have a pattern of absence, they would step through that. I certainly see that sometimes with use of city property, there's other policy violations that are coupled with that, and generally, that's not something that results in a verbal or a written. But I think that the rationale for that, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't tell you why, because it's been language that's there that far precedes my tenure here with the city. But we do look at everything very situational and determine whether or not progressive makes sense, or if suspension or termination may be appropriate on the totality of the incident.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jensen?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman clear. Is there any other discussion before we go and proceed to the vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
We have nine yes.
Motion passes. We now move into the non-action items, discussion for the city budget priorities. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. Well, the budget process has now begun for 2019. The city conducted a CIP open house last night, and tonight, we are beginning the discussion on the budget priorities for 2019. Nick Hawkins is here to assist us with that process.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Welcome to the official kickoff to the 2019 budget season. We had a successful op season, everyone's coming back to work in shape, and we're ready for a successful season with a new coach and some, some new key players on the team, so we're ready to get at it. Per the municipal code, you, as the governing body, must adopt priorities for the budget no later than the third week in May. I'm gonna discuss the timeline shortly, but historically, this has been done in April so that it gives us enough time as we develop the budget later in the month and, and, in May that we'll have, we can incorporate those priorities into the discussion. To help with the discussion, we're gonna present a brief overview of where we've been, what challenges lie ahead. We'll take a look at the calendar and get your input on that. And finally, we'll review the 2018 budget priorities and use that as a baseline discussion. We are adding grants to the discussion today as there's some natural overlap with that, so we thought that it was, it was just natural to combine that presentation today. So Sheena will be following me, and we'll close out the presentation talking about our grant priorities. So first, a look at how the priorities shaped the 2018 budget. Streets were a major discussion item at this point last year, and you put in, under the infrastructure priority, to increase, increase the, the city's PCI payment condition index score, which is a comprehensive score of how the streets in the, in the city fare. And I think that goes from poor to excellent. As of last night, I don't know if it was as of last night, but at the CIP open house, on the screen up there, it said that we're actually at a 56. We put $2 million into, $2 million additional dollars into this year's budget to address that and to try and reach that over, over a 10-year period. With regards to public safety, the fire department will be implementing Phase One of advanced life support capability slated towards the latter half of the year. That's a $240,000 investment. With regards to fiscal sustainability, we adopted the current budget with no increase to the mill levy. And finally, we continue our efforts to enhance performance and data in the city with an increased focus on transparency. One thing to note, if you've been reading the Weekly Review the last couple of weeks, we are a What Works City honor roll city. We are one of five cities in the nation with that distinction. There were nine cities that received silver or gold level certification, and I think we were, if not the smallest, probably from a resource perspective, we were the smallest among all those cities. So we're looped in there with a lot of the major center cities in the country, Boston, Louisville, Kansas City, closest one to us. So that's a big achievement and something that gives us motivation to keep working on being that data-driven organization, and we'll, we'll be implementing some of that into the budget process as well. So next, we'll look at the calendar, and I'm gonna be emailing this out to you tomorrow morning, so we can definitely have some discussion on it tonight, but I would say that over the next couple of weeks, we'll work to finalize this. So, you know, most, most upcoming, we'll have discussions on the capital improvement plan that will be starting with the governing body in March. We do have our CIP bus tour, which you should have an invite out. That will be this Saturday from 10 to noon. We'll be starting at, at City Hall, I'm looking at the City Hall project, and overall, we'll be looking at about 15 to 20 projects. I'm at that, and it's, we'll be staying mostly indoors and in the bus, so won't have to get out in the cold too much. But that will be a good chance for you to see some of the past and current and future projects that are, that are, that will be happening in the city. We have two dates on here for public engagement. We have our budget open house, which will be March 13th, or March 14th. That will be at the library, again, that's a chance for staff and for the public to come and interact with staff and see how the budget affects different services throughout the city. We've also put room on here for some budget public input in April. Again, that will give the public a chance to address budget priorities before we really get into the meat of preparing the budget. The big change from last year are the dates for the budget workshop. So as you recall, for those of you who were on the council last year, we started our discussions in early June, and in the middle of, of June, we got our evaluations from the county and found out that we were about $250,000 short in our revenue projection for property tax, which led to a little bit of a scramble to put together a final, final proposed budget for you. So we've recommended, with the property tax-led bill that's been passed, which I'll talk about in the next slide a little bit, recommended starting the discussions after we get the evaluations from the county so that we can have a more comprehensive discussion on that. We still plan to get the budget out to you early, early June or, or late May, so that you'll have time before those discussions to review, review the proposed budget and get input and questions ready. So the, the last few items on here are mainly procedural dates, so setting the maximum taxes levied, that's just setting a revenue number, and that's setting up our, our public hearing and the first week of August, and then we adopt the budget no later than the 25th, and we've got that slated for August 14th. So again, I'll be emailing this out to you in the morning, and welcome any feedback that you have on, on that. So before getting to the priorities discussion, I wanna talk a little bit about what the issues that we've seen that we think are gonna have an impact on the budget in 2019. So the first is limited revenue growth. So consistently, over the last several years, revenue growth has been somewhere between 1 and 2%, coupled with just natural increases and salary and benefit growth. I think healthcare was actually a pretty good story this year, it was only a 5% increase, but when you look at that in the context of revenue growth, revenues are going like this, and expenditures are going like this. So every year, it's a puzzle that we just have to, have to piece together, but nonetheless, it's something that's gonna be a crunch on the, on the budget, and that's kind of an ongoing one. Also, we have several million dollars in deferred maintenance and our fleet facilities group, and so trying to find a way to address those needs within the budget will be a, a key discussion point this year. And then continued funding for streets. Like I said, we invested $2 million into the 2018 budget, so going forward, we need to see what's the best mix. We put about 1.2 million into the general fund, so we need to have the discussion of, is that the right fit? Do we need to, how do we, how do we piece that together to meet our, our PCI goals? And then also, coupled with that, will be, I think, Jason Peak, our public works director, will be discussing this next week, but we'll have our citywide sales tax renewal that expires in 2019. So we'll be needing to have those discussions early. Without that, that's about $13 million a year that we're dedicating primarily to streets, so if that's not passed, then that drastically changes the discussion on how we fund our, our streets. And finally, we have the property tax lid, so that limits, that was a bill that was passed by the state legislature in 2016 and had its first impact in, on the 2018 budget. That limits the amount of growth that we can have on our property tax to a five-year average of the Consumer Price Index, which last year was 1.4%, so we couldn't grow our, our property tax revenue by more than that amount, with two major exceptions being public safety and debt, so any expenditures related to that would not count. This year, I talked to the state, and it's anticipated that it's gonna go up slightly to 1.5%, but when we talk about revenue growth, that, that limits the conversation a little bit. So moving on to budget priorities, you should have with your pack and a full copy of the 2019 budget priorities with objectives lined out under each priority. What you have are the adopted priorities for the current year, and this is really the first, first step in the, in the discussion process. So again, we'll be looking to adopt these in early April, so we'll have several rounds of discussion on this process. What you have right now are the 2018 adopted priorities. The past few years, you've largely kept those in place, and a lot of the work has been done on the objective side. And just from a, a guidance standpoint, as we put together the budget, the more specific you can be, the better, because that helps us put together the budget. The streets example that we've talked on, talked about, that was one that you put in place last year, and we made that investment in, in the budget for this year. So those really do guide us as we go through the budget process. So if I had a recommendation, I would say looking at those specific objectives is a, is a good start. But these are your priorities, and, you know, if you wanna do a wholesale change, you are certainly welcome to do that. So with that, that is kind of where we're at right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if we wanna start the discussion right now, happy to do that, but again, this is the, the first step in that, that process.
Thank you, Nick. Before we begin the discussion, just wanna remind everybody that this is just the first of many conversations that we're going to have with regards to these budget priorities. As all of you know, you've received an email from Margot just outlining that we are going to try to also work on the priorities that we see in our, for our city and for you all individually, for your district. We're going to expand the work that we're beginning with those priorities, and then going to start looking at how those priorities translate into success. Because it's one thing for us to say this is a priority, but then how does that look like success for us? Then we can start having a discussion and continue adding to this process that is going to be instrumental as we go on with the budget. So again, just understand that tonight is just the beginning of the discussion. For me, I love the budget time because it, I know, I'm weird, because it allows us to take a look at how we are performing for our community and how we're going to make the investment of our constituents. So I'm excited to hear that there, there was the phrase no mill levy increase, and I think that everybody here smiles when we hear that. And the other thing that is really important for us to note as we continue moving forward with this is the, the impressive success that we're having, that already within one year of adding $2 million to our Fund for the Streets, we went from a 55% to a 56% in just one year. And that we're able to do that because we have that sales tax that's going to be renewed, that has to be renewed. So with that being said, I'm open for Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Thank you. I just have two things that I would like us all to keep in mind as we work this process. I think there are two questions that, as we come across each point, we need to consider. First one is, what is the impact of public health? In everything we do, we should consider what the impact to the public health of our community is. As all, all of us know that we have a somewhat deplorable public health rating, and the only way we're gonna make that better is if we keep that top of mind. So as we work through these budget priorities, I'd encourage us to think about, if we did this, what would be the impact of public health? How does that help make our community healthier? You know, exercise, that sort of thing. The second thing is, what is the role of government? Is this particular item something that the government really should be responsible for? Is it better done by subcontractor? Is it better handled by the nonprofit sector? Everybody wants the City of Topeka to be responsible and do everything, and the reality is that that's not possible, and, you know, with our expenses continuing to climb, it's definitely not realistic. So another, and not, you know, to say for, again, say a particular item, just as we work through these, what is the role of government? Is this really something that we should be handled? Is this better handled by the county or by the state? That sort of thing. At the end of the day, we should be able to explain exactly why everything we do as the government of this community, we do. How is this our role? Streets, great example. Streets are clearly are our role as the government, that sort of thing. So what's the impact of public health? And is this really the role of government? And if so, why? Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
Throw in a little historical perspective for the new folks. We have, in, in the time that I've been on the council, have gone back and forth between having a list that maybe took a whole page, a budget priorities, things folks thought were important and that we should spend money on, and in the last few years have said, you know, that's too much, we need to look much more big picture, big bucket, and let's narrow, and definitely choose our words carefully, but narrow that budget priorities list. And so the one you see, last year, we did tweak a couple of words from the year before. For instance, I think the year before, one of them, we were investing perhaps in public safety because we needed to get our fleets back together, we needed to have enough money to fund the whole department at, at full level, and then we shifted it to continuing that commitment because we had hit that goal. But otherwise, we left it pretty lean, so those priorities were clear, and, and that did seem to work pretty well, as, as you think through this list and, and what you might wanna do to change it. I wanted to make a second point in that I am so excited that the mayor has asked us all for priorities, strategic priorities for the city and for our, for our districts. We just do need to remember that in a way, you've gotta draw the line between those two because not everything that's strategic and important costs money. Some of them, those things are very expensive, and some of those or changes that we should make don't cost any money at all. We just need to work a little smarter or whatever. So those, the strategic plan and those strategic priorities might look quite different than the budget priorities, and that's one reason I'm so excited about it, because we haven't had that, we've just been doing budget, and so just a couple of big picture things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hawkins, if I could just ask you, one thing that kinda caught my eye was the $2 million investment in the pavement management. And as I recall, last year, we actually took the excess countywide sales tax, which was like $9 million, and we spread that over three years, so aren't we actually spending like $5 million additional dollars for the next, this year and the next, the following two? Isn't that correct?
Yes, so that factored in what we discussed during the budget season was that what that $2 million would do with, if we continued that investment, it would get us to the 60, but that was inclusive of that $3.3 million that we're getting each year for the next three years. So this is basing it off of continuation of the citywide sales tax and also with that three point, or $10 million overall investment in the streets would, would get us.
Thank you, yeah, I, I just think it's, that's important for people to know, because it looks like we're only maybe spending an extra $2 million on streets, and in reality, we're gonna have to find when that 10, when that 9-point-something million runs out here in a couple more years, we need to spend another, we need to find another $3.5 million a year. We wanna continue the same trajectory. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you for bringing that up, councilman, and to piggyback on that, we needed that $5 million a year indefinitely, just, just so the new folks, we need it indefinitely. And so we dedicated every penny of the leftover countywide sales tax for three years to get three of that $5 million a year, and then we challenged the staff to see if they could add that other $2 million to get us at least to that $5 last year, and they did find that, and we were able to do that without raising taxes. However, most of that... However, most of that was one-time money. It was not, it was not yet digging deep into departments or whatever to come up with $2 million that would renew every year. Some of it, a little bit of it was, but most of it was not renewable. So this year, if we want to not raise taxes, we've, and we've got limited growth in revenue, we've got a challenge in a way this year, just as if we were going into a decline because we've got the squeeze to get that that money. If we can come up with renewable money for the $2 million this year, and that at least of the five will carry us indefinitely, otherwise, we're going to have to reinvent that again next year. So it's a very sobering, I think doable challenge, but it's a challenge.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Hawkins? Yes, Councilwoman Cohen?
I saw the sales tax, citywide sales tax coming up. How does that work? Do we, do we start that process here? I guess this is kind of a newbie question.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of the legal and how that would work from a legal standpoint, but I believe it would have to be introduced by, if it's a public vote. So we need to go on the ballot. I'm trying to think of the timeline on that would be August?
I believe you're correct. I believe it's August as a timeframe. I haven't looked at the exact date. That's the month that I recall that it would need to be. Obviously, we have to bring that before the governing body for approval to put it on the ballot.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, Mr. Hawkins?
Well, that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to hand it over to Sheena to talk a little bit about our grant priorities for the year.
Good evening, governing body. My name is Sheena Smith, and I write and administer grants for the city of Topeka. And I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our grants program and the grant priorities that we set last year, and we are hoping to continue this year. As you can see, the grant priorities went through a few iterations as we asked department heads and staff what they thought would be the best priorities to seek outside funding for. And they really align with the budget priorities. So that's why we decided to combine the presentations tonight. Most of all, their priorities fall under the fiscal sustainability priority under the budget. And you can see here, infrastructure, public safety, quality of life, things are threaded throughout their priorities for the grant program. And we think that there's a little bit of a value, or a lot of value actually, in continuing this because our grants program is increasing and the program is just getting started. And so giving us some time to flesh that out would be really important. So far this past year, we focused on a lot of infrastructure, and we're successful in that area. So we'll be moving to the other priorities in the upcoming months, focusing on, not only on infrastructure, but public safety and mental health and vulnerable populations, which we think will add to that quality of life piece. So as you can see here, these are grants awarded by department. And I'll go through a few of the grants that we have received in 2017. They are a mix of formula and competitive grants. And when I say formula grant, that means that some departments, like Neighborhood Relations or Police, will receive money because we are a city government. And so they receive money for certain programs that are given by the federal government and administered through the city. So for example, Neighborhood Relations gets money for CDBG, the Community Development Block Program, and their homeless and housing programs as well. Something to note in the Neighborhood Relations dollars that you see listed there, we received a grant through the National League of Cities to increase participation in summer and after school meal programs in the city. That was the Refuel Topeka Initiative. I'm not sure if you, you may have seen it around town. It was plastered all over the city buses. So we were really excited to be able to participate in that program and to help get kids more meals when they're not, when they're not in school. Moving on to planning, we were successful in receiving a few big grants for the planning department. One gaining some national attention through the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. We got $300,000 to assess sites for environmental damage in North Topeka. And that project is up and running, and we are starting to select some sites to assess. And once they've been assessed, we would be cleared to apply for cleanup and redevelopment funding. So these are economic development types of grants that we're really excited to get. Additionally, we received some transportation alternative grants from the Kansas Department of Transportation. One was $800,000 for Bike Ways Phase Three Program on Eighth Avenue. And another one, as Councilman, our Deputy Mayor Jensen mentioned, thinking about public health, it was for the Safe Rot to School Phase Three Program for Quincy Elementary School. That will help fix some of the streets around Quincy Elementary so that parents and kids would be encouraged to walk and bike to school, thereby increasing their physical activity and readiness for the school day. Some education components and reducing barriers to walking and biking to schools also built into that program. So that's something we're really excited about. Public Works received, or is in the process for receiving, a million dollars to do a couple of streets projects that would increase safety. It was from the Highway Safety Administration. And Utilities received $500,000 to work on the Topeka River Wear Project. So that would be essential in building the Oregon Trail Park in that area and would also provide some funding to do a fish passage. The Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism was really excited to get involved to save some of the species that they're interested in, in the Kansas River, because they're unique to this area. So, and the dollars you see on the Police Department are mostly formula grants through equipment or task force reimbursements that they have for different programs that they administer. And in total, you can see here that it's about $7 million in grant revenue. We think that is only just a testament to city departments going after funding to supplement and enhance what the city is already doing and making sure that it strategically aligns with the overall budget priorities and the things that we're wanting to invest in at the city level. So just to close, I would just like to mention that we have received four competitive grants then in the past, but formula grants continue to decrease year over year. For example, the Department of Neighborhood Relations have experienced some reductions based on federal decisions made at the federal level. So those are the kinds of things that we're monitoring on a continued basis. And we'll make sure that we're looking to fund any gaps that we continue to see there and how it will impact the city going forward. I'm constantly working with community organizations to look for ways to develop partnerships in order to maximize our impact that we're having in the community. And if the city cannot apply for some of these because of our designation as a government, we encourage community organizations and nonprofits to also partner with us to make sure that we're having the most impact for our residents. And with that, I will take any questions if, at the appropriate time.
Sheena, thank you so much for your work. I think it's commendable, the work that you have been doing with collaborating with all these departments. Her position is not just grant writer. I think it's also grant administrator, which has helped us significantly in bringing all of these things together. And I'm, we're seeing definitely the fruits of your labor. With that being said, are there any comments or questions for Sheena from the body?
Councilwoman Claire?
Is this $7 million, are these new grants this year, or have we been getting these for years and years?
Some of the formula grants we have received in the past, like the funding for Neighborhood Relations, the CDBG funding goes back 25 years or more. Others are new. About half of the money, $3 to $4 million of that are competitive grants that we've received this year.
This year? And just a couple of questions. Since I represent North Topeka, what, what sites in North Topeka are, can you give me a couple that they're looking to assess?
Yeah, sure. The Brownfields Program is administered through the Environmental Protection Agency. Topeka was the only city in Kansas to receive this grant last year. And we focused on North Topeka because of the potential for economic development and the alignment with the Oregon Trail Park that's going to go in there. So there are some city-owned property and parcels that we're looking to assess first because, and then also, the city has to clear some land for that park to take place. So those are the first properties that we're submitting for eligibility to be assessed. And then, once that is complete, we will be doing some community engagement in North Topeka area and in the North Topeka area to see what other properties would be candidates for assessment and to see what has the most impact for economic development in the area.
Okay. And why Quincy School? How was that school chosen?
So there was a plan that was developed and a study that was conducted by the Shawnee County Health Agency. And they did that a few years ago. And the planning department received a Phase One Safe Rot to School grant a few years ago to be completed. And so once they completed that work, we were eligible to apply for a Phase Two grant, which was just ideal implementation. And in the master plan for the Bike Ways and Active Living through the planning department, involved in those conversations, they identified Quincy as kind of a pilot school. So they started this with Phase One. We're going to do Phase Two. And we're going to use those examples and evaluate that program to potentially take the pilot results and expand it to other schools in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Sheena? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
This concludes the presentations for the discussion of the budget priorities. So we move forward to Item B, Discussion of Tax Increment Financing.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, City Speaker has established various other financial policies that guide us in our decision-making that we do when we look at economic development projects, such as the CID policy. Tonight, Nikki Lee, Director of Finance, is here to present a review of the tax increment financing policy that was included in your packet and have your consideration of that in a couple of weeks. Director Lee?
Good evening. In addition to the policy in front of you, I also emailed you a memo that kind of outlined a few updates to the policy. And I'll walk through that when we get to the appropriate point of the slide for those of you that haven't seen that today. But I wanted to draw your attention to that. It's what's right in front of you. So thank you for the introduction. As City Manager said, this is really the next in line of the policies that we've been working on for several years, not only in economic development, but in the finance department broadly. So this is a pretty exciting next step that continues to just bring us in line with all of the best practices that we've been working on for several years. And first, before we get into details, I really wanted to give everybody an overview of what the city council's kind of tools are for economic development. It's a very important distinction for you all to know what's in your toolbox for economic development versus what the county might do, what GoToPika and the Greater Partnership might do. So this is important, especially for, I think, the new governing body members to know that this is kind of one of many. So it really falls into the big picture. And we have many options of what might be the best tool to use for certain developments. TIF might not be the best tool for all of them, but if not, we have many other options. And we are just constantly looking at what's the most appropriate source. So the city of Topeka, the main tools that the city is allowed to use by state statute, one would be IRBs, so industrial revenue bonds. And these, several you saw recently, might be, we are lending our tax-exempt status to a larger project, for example, Brewster Place. That's a very large project, of course, very important to the community, that you all approved earlier this summer. It might be a tax abatement. Many, in many instances, this is something that the County Commission actually approves. And then we can actually grant a construction sales tax exemption for a project when appropriate. In addition to that, a community improvement district, which at its basic level is when an incremental sales tax is added in a certain area. So this is very common where you might be adding retail. So example, Crosswinds in the community, most recently the Cyrus Hotel, where in that development, whoever is paying sales tax will pay an additional increment. And then everything gained from that increment is used for the development of that area. A tax increment financing, that's of course what we're speaking about tonight. So I'll go into a lot more detail on that. And then Starbond, Heartland Park is the Starbond that we have. There aren't a lot of these throughout the state. So where they do exist, they're very big projects, very large endeavors that are, of course, are in their own right, guided by state statute and approved by the Department of Commerce. So tax increment finance, just at its basic level, it's an economic development tool that captures new tax revenue, which is the increment, and allows it to be used by a development. The creation of a TIF district does not cause existing taxpayers to pay any additional funds. We'll walk through an example, but what it does is set a base level of taxes. And then anything that comes in above and beyond that goes towards the development. So it doesn't take away from something that any taxing entity is already receiving. And then during the TIF term, as I just mentioned, that all the different taxing entities continue to receive what they'd been receiving before that district was established. So just a basic example in front of you, I'll just use the assessed value. If a property is assessed at $10,000 before that district is established, and then after the district and after the development comes in at $100,000, then that $90,000 would be used by the development for the purposes as outlined by the governing body. In addition to that, it's important to kind of point out that sales tax can also be an increment that is gathered by a TIF. So in a recent TIF, Wheatfield, which we'll walk through a little bit later in the presentation, that's an example of where we did have, we established a sales tax base in that district. And any sales tax above and beyond that can also be diverted to the development. A TIF can only be used in certain areas, and these are outlined by state statute. This is a very important distinction. The idea behind a TIF is that it's used in an area of the city that, for different reasons, whether it's blighted, whether it's a conservation area, meaning it might have, tends to be older buildings on the development, if it's a bioscience area. If you go through the state statute, there's a lot of very specific types of districts that were clearly added for very specific purposes throughout the state. But the idea behind a TIF is that it should be used in an area that, if it wasn't for the TIF, that developer might not be able to develop it for the same cost that they might if they went to an area of town that didn't have these same kinds of challenges. And a TIF can only pay for certain costs within that development. And these costs are really justified by the fact that that area of town is more difficult to develop. So land acquisition, public infrastructure, landscaping, parking facilities, and some different special purposes. It can't be used to fund the actual building itself. And just quickly walking through how a TIF actually works, when it's a property tax TIF, that's actually, ultimately, it's implemented by the city, but the county itself is the one that sets that base value and collects that incremental tax and then diverts it to the city. On the sales tax side, that's collected by the state, and then again, is passed on to the city and ultimately passed on to the development for all of the agreements that are laid out. All local property taxing districts are included. So, you know, when we say property tax, that's of course not just the city. That would be the school district, the county, anyone that falls within that district. And then a TIF can be no longer than 20 years per state statute. And then finally, a TIF creation, which again, we'll walk through a couple of examples, is really a two-step process. And this is very important kind of step that our policy proposes, that we make a more distinct and distinguish how will these two different steps occur. So first, you're establishing the actual TIF district. And if you remember with our most recent example of Wheatfield, that's what we did this summer. So in June is when the city said, all right, here's the boundaries of the TIF district. The most important part of that step is that that's what actually sets the base value for that entity. And that also starts a 30-day protest period where taxing entities within that area, if they had an issue or something that they didn't approve about that district, that would be their time to come to the city and pass on any comments. So after that, the TIF project plan is actually created. So the project plan is where the actual development and the development agreement occurs. That's where the developer says, all right, now that we have the district, here's what we plan to do within that area. It hasn't happened a lot in Topeka, but it's occurring a lot all across the state, where you might have a district that has multiple project plans. They might overlap. They might have different time periods. They might be next to each other. They might be next to each other. There's just multiple different examples how a project plan would be different than a TIF district itself. And one important part of the process is that this does require a 2/3 vote to approve. So, once you come to the technicality of a TIF is there's multiple different steps along the process with the governing body that might have different requirements than a normal governing body action. So, I thought I'd give you just a brief overview of the TIFs that we have in Topeka right now. We currently have two TIF districts. One would be the College Hill TIF District, which is at 17th and Washburn and the area right around there. It was established in 2006. It captured property tax in that area. And ultimately, overall, it was a $24 million project, which included residential units, retail space, and a lot of public infrastructure improvement, which I'll give you a few pictures here. But in doing my research, I've gotten a lot of information about what the area looked like prior to this project and pictures and names of different kind of entities that existed in that area. And so, it's a much different district than it was then. I see a couple of you smiling. And then, in addition to that, the most recent TIF would be the Wheatfield Village TIF, which is 29th and Fairlon area. It was established in 2017. The official district starts in 2019. It will capture property tax and sales tax. And that's a $93 million project, which, again, has residential units and commercial space. So, as you can see just from the scope of these projects, these are very important, pretty large-scale economic development projects. So, Wheatfield, just to give you a snapshot, this is a before picture. And this was designated a conservation area due to how old and blighted some of the buildings were in that area. And, of course, the construction is starting soon or as we speak, so we don't have any current pictures. But this is a rendering of the ultimate project. You can find a lot more documents with the approval and the project plan and the agenda items themselves. But this is one example. As you can see, it will be a transformation of that corner. And then, College Hill. So, a couple of pictures in front of you. I apologize for the clarity on the pictures. I tried to find pictures of Quincy, Magoo's, Annie's, Santa Fe, Apple Jack's, Grace's Liquor. As I was doing research about what was in this district before, it seemed like it was just a bunch of separate little bars, which had its own purpose, yes. And I think clearly, from what I can see, it needed a little bit of a refresh. And then, this is, of course, the after picture on the College Hill development. So, it's a mixture of commercial and residential space. And I think in addition to the commercial and residential space, what you don't see in this picture are necessarily all the public infrastructure improvements that occurred as part of the project. As I understand it, we replaced water lines, sewer line, streets, parking spots, sidewalks. So, that's part of the great thing about a TIF is that it's not just necessarily for the developer and the development itself. It's also for the area around that. So, any questions before I move on to the policy in front of you all?
Any questions from the body? Seeing none, you may proceed.
So, just a couple of highlights in front of you. And I'll walk you through the different page numbers if you're kind of going through the policy as it stands. And again, of course, this is posted online. Right now, there's no existing policy other than the state statute. So, everything that I just mentioned leading up to now, we do have the state statute that guides us through every TIF project that we've had. So, we have that to lean on. But without having that, we're not setting our own kind of standards or expectations within the city about what we want. Right now, we only have state's requirements. So, it really is a best practice. And you see at most places within the state that have active economic development and TIF projects have separate established policies, just like the one in front of you. One important part of this policy is that it has separate guidelines for TIF districts and TIF project plans. So, that goes through Pages 2 and 3. And as you're reading it, until you've been through one of these projects, you may not really realize how important those two separate steps are. But they're very, very important because this policy really lays out a process for the governing body, the community. A developer can establish these districts and then come in with a project plan. So, it really lines out how we can really start to designate what areas we might think might be the best eligible for a TIF district with a project plan coming in maybe after the fact or with multiple separate entities. So, it's a pretty exciting process that it lays out. This does solidify the but-for analysis. This might sound minor, but it's extremely important. So, the state statute doesn't actually require that you, the governing body, ask the developer that they, whether they would have done this project without those incentives. So, this policy actually mandates that there's a but-for test. But for that TIF and that incentive that you all are granting, they may not have done that development. And we believe this is a best practice and really something before incentives are given, you want the guarantee that they need that. In addition to that, it does set a maximum of 20%. So, that says of the percent of their total project, that's the maximum that the governing body would give using a TIF. The applicant must show financial capacity, and that's defined through Pages 3 and 4. That is common in policies everywhere across the state and really just part of our due diligence that if someone's coming and expecting these funds, that they would be able to have the capacity to complete that project. One very important distinction on Page 4 is that this TIF policy states a preference for prioritizing areas of great need and other public-private investment. So, what that's really saying is that we would prefer that a TIF would happen in an area where we're already doing a lot of other investments, where we might be able to really further take other dollars and make it even better, improve that district using other funds where possible. This includes recommended terms for the development agreement itself. These are all lined out on Page 5, including a minimum private investment and a maximum reimbursement. So, this is really where the deal happens. This is the actual redevelopment or the development plan that you all have come to sign with the developer, lines out those actual terms of the deal. How and when is the money? Will that be distributed? When do they start to get funds? Is there a maximum? So, this is a very important distinction that says that they would be expected to expend a certain amount and that we would only give up to a maximum amount. There's an application fee and a process, which, again, currently, we don't have an official kind of start for if a developer comes to the city or if the city wants to start a TIF process. This really lines out an official way to start that. It establishes design criteria, which ultimately are in line with what we'd expect with our comprehensive plan anyways. But it makes explicit the fact that if there's a TIF project, we would expect that it would follow all of the same requirements of something in line with the comp plan. This outlines a preferred method of financing and talks quite extensively about how that financing is actually, how that actually plays out. So, several points throughout the policy, you'll see a preference for pay-as-you-go financing. So, that would be, most recently, the Wheatfield Village model, where we're not financing, we're not taking bonds on the developer's behalf. If the development doesn't come to fruition and there's no incentive gained, then there's no incentive given. Alternatively, we do have, there is an option by state statute. You are all allowed, are allowed to take out bonds on a development's behalf. So, in the College Hill example, at the time, the governing body actually financed the project with the intent that the increment would cover the future debt payments. So, in the College Hill example, debt payments are about $530,000 a year and increments about $207,000 a year. So, it's, it can be a risk taking out bonds ultimately that are backed by the city itself, who will then cover the difference. You know, in that example, there was quite a bit of public infrastructure that was improved as well. So, you know, it's not a failure from an infrastructure perspective, but if you expected that the development would cover its costs, when you take out bonds, sometimes there's no guarantee that it does. And then, ultimately, important distinction is that there is authority from the governing body, when and if appropriate, to waive or make exceptions to different parts of the policy. Every TIF is different. Every development is different. So, sometimes you can't exactly anticipate what kinds of projects will come in front of you or just how this kind of development will change in the future. So, with that, I invite you all, I mean, everybody that's listening, everybody who's affected by this, to continue to send questions and comments. My contact information is in front of you. It's on the city's website. We will continue to have discussions with the Greater Topeka Partnership and developers as appropriate to give everybody's feedback. Right now, we're recommending that we come back to you all within a few weeks, just to give plenty of time to implement any changes and hear any feedback. So, quickly, the memo that's in front of you outlines a couple of the changes that will already be integrated throughout the policy that you see in front of you on February 20th. Just quickly, a couple of these are cleanup. There's a change to one of the whereas's on the first page to really make the distinction that TIFs will not occur with every redevelopment project throughout the city. In the general policy statement, we just believed that it was important, yet again, in the upfront, the very beginning of the policy, to state a preference for pay-as-you-go. That way, if someone's reading it from top to bottom, right away, they don't get past the first general policy guideline before reading that. And then, the rest of the policy really reinstates that. We clarified a little bit of language in the policy guidelines. The fourth bullet there is really kind of a cleanup item as well with the change of wording. The design criteria change, that is to make explicit that the design criteria will apply to multifamily and residential as well. And then, the method of financing there is just a kind of a blurb in there that we wanted to make sure tied exactly with state statute. So, again, a little bit of cleanup. Happy to go through any of those proposed changes at this point, if you have any questions beyond that.
Are there any comments or questions? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Lee. First of all, thank you for bringing this to us and your presentation. And I really appreciate you guys looking at this. I believe it was Councilman Harmon in his last, one of the last things he said, is he kind of gave us a charge to maybe be more strategic with these economic developments instead of what's reacting. That said, and I don't expect you to do this tonight, you're standing up there. But would you mind just looking at some of the things we've done in the last few years, the things that we've approved TIFs on? Would you mind just using these proposed things and telling if those projects would have went under these new criteria? I guess, from being in construction for 28 years around here, Speaker's just never been a real hotbed of development. So, I hate to throw additional obstacles in front of things. There needs to be definitely parameters and established policies to help us. But I just wonder, want to make sure we don't kill anything here, I guess.
If you don't mind, I'll answer that pretty generally.
Absolutely.
We looked at multiple policies and putting this one together. This is very flexible compared to a lot of cities' policies. You know, just to your point that we don't want to prevent somebody, we don't want this policy to prevent a very important development to the city from approaching us. So, there are actually a lot more restrictions in many other policies that we chose not to include. For example, we could use this to say, "We only want these to happen in certain areas, only certain types of development." There's a lot of Johnson County models that are very, very detailed about the kinds of things they want and don't want, to the point of, "We don't want multifamily. We do want multifamily. We're not doing any more multifamily." I mean, there's, this is, this really excludes any of those specifics that other entities might include, only, you know, to your point, that we have many needs in the city and we have so many different areas that could use development that we don't want to exclude any of that. So, that's some of the feedback that we've been getting, that we've been hearing, is that this is a very broad policy that still lets you all kind of line out some preferences for the city.
City Manager?
Thank you. My couple of comments on that is that this is a starting point. And I think it's important that, as we look at this, businesses that are considering or industry that's considering locating here, they know what our starting point is. And it shows also that we're aware that this is a tool, we're willing to utilize it. And I think it presents them an opportunity to have an understanding of where we're coming from at the beginning of this. But we think that it isn't such a document that would give anyone concern if they were interested in coming to our community, that it is broad enough and gives the opportunity for us to look at different parameters than may be specific here in order to try and work to make a project happen.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. This is Lee.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Lee? Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this. And thank you for the pictures here of the old College Hill. I don't remember those, but I don't remember much of the College Hill. That being said, a couple of things on this, and I think this is a great start. One thing I would, just of a housekeeping nature, I would take a look a little bit more of Section 3.2, where we talk about the TIF project plan application. A lot of this stuff for contractual document lines, like 136 to 143, in a contractual document, to me, they're a little bit vague versus being specific, has the financial wherewithal to make that, you know, what does that mean? You know? So, I think maybe just taking a look at that and seeing, you know, how we address that. The only thing of substance that I would like to see, and in looking through the agreement, it may go good on Section 4 Development Agreement, I would like to see us consider some language in regards to a home rule for contractors located within Shawnee County in regards to the bidding process. I'd like for, at least us to do a little bit of looking at that and see how we could possibly incorporate some home rule language into there. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Heller?
Just briefly, it's interesting. I'm feeling senior on the council. Having watched College Hill go along and having watched the debate on Wheatfields, I really credit City Manager and Finance Manager in that, in a way, what this has done is to try and bring forth the institutional history of what we've learned in the ones we've done before, both in terms of what people need to know. So, you don't have to have that conversation or go back and have a consultation in the back room and say, "Well, what is our policy on this or that or the other thing?" But also, for instance, you know, we learned a pretty tough lesson on bonding through the College Hill process. And so, bringing that forward just as a refresher, if there are new council members, new staff and so on, I think they've done a really good job of bringing forward lessons learned.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heller? Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Lee. Seeing none, we have public comment on this item. And the first individual signed up to speak is Mr. Henry McClure.
Good evening, Council Honorels. How are you all tonight? David Bevins called me up the other day and he said, "Henry, who are the champions of College Hill? You know, how'd this whole thing get going?" And, you know, first of mine came Clark Duffy, Jerry Farley. But I really got to thinking about it as time went on. You know, digesting my mind works a little differently. It was the process. The process is what was the champion of College Hill. Walking in, an individual, a guy like me, walking into the Economic Development Committee, couple of three guys sitting around and presenting an idea, and then that idea hatching into what you see today. College Hill started at the Economic Development Committee. And if I would have had just four minutes to give a presentation, it never would have floated. But we had the opportunity to hash it out and kick it around, and the city council guys got into it. And next thing you know, it's getting legs. And the city council's taking it on to the governing body. Jerry Farley handed us a set of, a study that he did on student housing, that it was just like, I handed it to my financial partners, and it was just a layup. It's like, all we have to do is implement Jerry Farley's plan for student, you know, for the housing project. It was perfect. It was perfect. But it was the process. Going through the process is what made that project happen, and that was the champion. Because then the community got behind it. You had to go to the school board. You had to go to the county. I mean, this was more of a lobbying job, you know? We acquired 40 pieces of real estate to make it happen, and I haven't forgotten one bit of it, you know? And we need to remember that. We need to remember the process, and that's what we've got to have in the community. A guy, we can't have, if you have a contractor, you hire a contractor to help you with projects, that's one thing, but I want to be able to live and die by you guys. You know, this is a representative republic, and you guys are elected to help me succeed myself. So I want to bring forth an idea through the process and let it live and die on its own. That's what's the champion of this thing. We got to start, we got to go back to the beginning and start with the process, where a guy can just come in and be a developer in the community. That's what we got to have. Got a minute. Look at that. You don't have to use it all. Being able to walk in and have the process work, we never would have done the deal if we didn't have the backing of the city bonds. We never would have done that. Did you guys see the email I sent back about the loss that we took as developers? The big short, we had to come in and re-collaborize the loans. We got in trouble at Core First, tried to work our way out of it. But without the help of the full faith and credit, that project would have never worked. And what you really got to look at is all the people that got behind it. See, I don't have to stand here and take the blame, because everybody got behind it. And we got to remember the process. Thank you. If you guys got any questions, I, was the original developer brought in the guys with the money up?
Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Personally, private, anything? All right, thanks.
The next individual set to speak is Ms. Marge Ahrens.
Thank you, Mayor De La Isla and members of the body. The last time I was here talking about a TIF was a pretty unhappy experience for me. And my name is Marge Ahrens. My overriding interest is in transparency in governance and in strengthening representative government. Creation of written public policy on the matter of tax increment financing projects attached to tonight's agenda sets a high standard for an open, fair, and strict process for possible TIF projects. I live just three blocks from the College Hill project, and we're not altogether happy with how much it has cost the city. This proposed-for-discussion policy reflects the true costs to the city for processing such a plan and demands solvency of a developer. I am grateful to Mr. Trout and members of the staff for seeing the need to open the discussion on this potential public policy. The results of the exemptions and incentives, which were well presented to us, all of them, are reflected in our tax base. Our property and sales taxes for those who pay are higher than those of most cities in the country and in the state. I like this document very much because it meets our real and stated needs that we've determined already by community goals and set in our written comprehensive plans, and also economic development and county plans, which are in the process. It's very impressive. It also urges that we have the opportunity to gain a clear understanding of the public costs of diverting potential property and sales income taxes for such a development through analysis. And that's very, that certainly is a transparent and thoughtful process for us to go through as a city, representing all the people here. And it allows us to be able to relate those costs to the money we need for critical services provided by our city and our county, our public schools, and other public benefits. To my understanding, before the acceptance of the Wheatfield project, the public bodies who were going to potentially be giving up money were not told, I don't believe, were not told how much they were losing by saying yes to this project. The school district is not asked if they're willing to give up income. I did not see the amount of money that the city and the county would be giving up, and we rely on all of them to provide us with major critical services. It also hurts when we give up a tax incentive. Our special jewels, like Washburn University, the public library, and Metro Transit, they are not asked if they are willing to give up. It's an extraordinary document for discussion. It places our elected officials and the goals and plans they have approved already in charge of how the community creates and recreates our city. I urge you to work the policy in the name of the public good. Thank you so much for this effort. Thank you, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Ms. Ahrens. Being no more discussion with regards to this item, we proceed to Item C, Discussion on Fireworks. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this item is brought before council for continuing discussion. Prior to the beginning of fireworks season, as we approach that, Deputy City Manager Gerber completed research on the topic, and we will review some of those items prior to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Governing Body, good evening. Before I get started on the presentation, a couple of housekeeping notes. One housekeeping note, really, you have some updated information here at your agenda or at your place this evening. The first is an updated list of what some of the cities and counties in our region do. The one that was in the packet, Shawnee County got left off of that one, and obviously, what they do has an impact on how we work with fireworks, so I thought that was especially important to include. And then the other two pages are some information that the fire department put together. The first of those is fire calls that they were called to, and then the second is entitled 2017 Firework Injuries, which just is a listing of injuries, major and minor, that the fire department went through during the 2017 fireworks season. So unless there are any questions right offhand, I'll go ahead and get started on my presentation. What I have this evening is a very brief presentation, which hopefully will, is designed and will hopefully spur some conversation for you. That's the intent. I suspect many of you, if not all of you, received input from your constituents on this subject, so mostly wanted to provide a factual framework for you as we move forward in this discussion. So we could get the presentation up on the screen.
Which part do you want me to go to?
Beginning. There we go. See if I can control it from here. Okay, so just, again, want to provide a framework for beginning discussions tonight. I anticipate that this will be the first discussion in maybe a series of discussions in how the body wants to proceed with this policy issue for the 2018 fireworks season. So we'll talk about what Topeka's ordinance says, what regulations of other cities are, and some information on 2017 fire service calls. So again, very briefly, Topeka's regulations were last modified, actually in 2015, I've forgotten about it, but Councilwoman Schwartz had a proposal for the celebration of Christ the King, and the fireworks ordinance was modified at that time. They were substantially modified the last time in 2011, and those modifications contain what are the meat of Topeka's regulations at this point. Generally speaking, or specifically speaking, discharge in Topeka is allowed from July 1st through July 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on those days, and then on July 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:59. So after 11:59, they're illegal on July 4th. Not, interestingly enough, the sale is allowed before it's discharged, so the sale takes place June 27th and then continues through July 5th. And just some general procedural issues in Topeka, there's, give or take, but there's about 35 licenses that we grant on an annual basis. There's a May 31st application deadline for those licenses and a $200 fee associated with those licenses. The fee is designed to cover inspections by our fire department, and those inspections typically involve multiple inspections, because they have to come and make sure it's set up properly, make sure they have appropriate equipment, fire extinguishers, exits, smoking signs, et cetera. So the $280 fee certainly does not cover the costs that go into our inspections. Shawnee County is somewhat similar to the city of Topeka, but they do allow fireworks to be shot off June 27th through July 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. every day. Another city that, or entity that's similar to the city of Topeka, the Unified Government, KCKY dot, allows discharge of fireworks from July 2nd through July 4th, different times, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then the city of Wichita, also similar to Topeka, allows them July 27th through July 4th, 6:00 a.m. to midnight on those days. Entities that don't allow them in our region include Lawrence, Olathe, Overland Park, and then just some other random cities that we picked out when we were doing our research that are similar to Topeka in scope and size. Cedar Rapids, Iowa, the Springfields in both Illinois and Missouri, Casey Mo, and Wichita Falls, Texas. Fire service calls, which you have on the sheets in front of you again, you'll note that there were 23 calls for fire service in 2017, and those, you know, those varied, but as I look through it, the main three seem to be dumpster fires, grass fires, and improper disposal of fireworks. And then the fire department responded to 34 accident calls in 2017. As you look down the list, you'll note that not all of those were in city limits, and it really ranged from a firework went off in someone's hand to they got powder in their eye, and there's just a wide variety. None of them required admittance, but some of them did require trips to the emergency unit. So again, intended to be a very brief overview. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. I might also point out, of course, we have Chief Duke, Chief Cochran, and Judge Pixel Doherty, who could speak to the ease at which convictions can happen in municipal court related to fireworks.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I see Councilwoman clear.
Do we know how many citations were given?
Councilwoman, I don't have that answer, but certainly that can be part of our continued discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gerber, on these numbers you just gave us, are those, are those the number of calls and accidents in total for that day? Are those just attributed to fireworks? And the reason I ask, I guess, is this abnormally high? Are there 23 calls a day anyway? Are there 34 accident calls a day?
Five days. Five days. It's put out in five days.
Councilman Emerson, if I understand the basis of your question, it's, these calls that you have on the sheet in front of you are specifically related to fireworks, and as you look back historically, they're fairly consistent on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, because it said on the other one, it said all types of accidents. So I thought you were getting at, on the bottom of your slide for the fire service calls, you just meant all sorts of fireworks.
Yeah, sorry, that was unclear. I just meant all sorts of accidents related to fireworks.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Heller, and then Councilwoman Cohen.
If people are interested in looking at the fires and the accident history, it might be helpful to ask for the, as well as the ticketing history, to go back probably 10 years. And I say that because the longer history then was displayed is fireworks were illegal in the city, most of the city's history, or at least for a substantial time. And it was in something, before I was on the council, but 2006, maybe, 2007, 2008, the council then made them legal for the first time. And they, and the time matched what you saw for Wichita and for the county. It was 10 full days, maybe 11 days for sales and 10 days to shoot them off, including the day after, and it was, it was just a lot of time. It was wide open. But that was the first time we had legal sale or discharge of fireworks in the city limits at that point. What I, and so when we talked about it in 2011, which you saw up on the chart, that was because people were concerned that was too long, and so we cut it back at that point. What I'm remembering is that the number of injuries hadn't changed very much from when they were illegal to when they were legal, and maybe the fires as well. So if people are considering a change, it would be worth going back and asking them to pull a couple of years anyway from when they were illegal. Because I know that one of the frustra, and I'm not taking sides either way, one of the frustrations was people were setting them off anyhow. So just to see from the safety and ticketing standpoint might be interesting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heller. We'll go to Deputy Mayor Jensen, and after that, we'll invite the public comment. We have eight individuals signed up to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just for interest, I reached out to, Liz reached out to the large police department just to see what kind of information they had, knowing that they have a full ban there. And they still got hundreds of phone calls about fireworks going on. So clearly, a ban is not realistically effective at stopping all forms of fireworks. My concern in opposing a ban here is fireworks are so readily accessible in the county and in other places, people are just going to go by them, bring them back in the city limits, and shoot them off, except then our police department will be racing around like wild banshees trying to catch all these folks. Is that really what we want them doing, or focusing on, you know, other crime like car thefts and so forth? So just some interesting questions I had about that. In places where they are banned, they still seem to be going off at all hours of the day and night. So is a ban really even an effective tool? Thank you.
So we'll proceed with public comment. Like I said, we have eight individuals signed up for public comment. I will call two individuals so that you can start getting ready for the next person. The first individual signed up to speak is Bill Johnson, followed by Deborah Edwards.
Okay, before I get started, I'd like to thank my representative on the council, Mr. Mays, for letting me know that this was going on tonight. We had talked about this while he was campaigning, and so I appreciate that. Okay, I think that really, the main problem we have is the size of the fireworks we have. They're just, they're just completely out of control, you know? I mean, they're just, they're too loud, they're too big. I mean, they're just, they're too loud, they're too big. Last year, I had neighbors that were shooting off Roman candles. Roman candles in the city of Topeka, you know, in the city limits is not a good thing. The rockets, I found a debris from a rocket, you know, in my backyard, 10 foot from my back door. I've got dogs out in the backyard. Fortunately, they weren't, you know, nothing hit them, but it could have. So that's one thing that we really need to consider is downsizing while it can be discharged. And as far as the time of selling them, let's just start it at the same time that you can start shooting them off on July 1st and end it on the 4th of July. That would be the easiest thing to do. It used to be that they had to stop shooting them off at 11 o'clock, and then they got changed to midnight. I don't know whether taking it back to 11 o'clock would do any good, because, you know, you still have people that 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning are shooting them off. So I don't know what to do about that. I called in on the, I called on the police department last year. I had a neighbor that was still shooting them off at 1, and they told me that they had no idea when they'd be able to get there to talk to him. So, you know, if we're going to have a fireworks ordinance, let's give our police department the manpower and the ability to enforce it. But like Mr. Emerson said, there's, you know, what have we wanted to do? You know, spend all night chasing down fireworks or, or, you know, what they're supposed to be doing? So all this needs to be taken into consideration. If, you know, the best thing to do is not even have them. When I was a kid, we couldn't shoot them in the city of Topeka, and I grew up all right. We went out, the grandpa took me out to the county, you know, out in the county to shoot them off, so it worked fine then. So I don't know, but it needs to be changed, and I was sure the last time when we had a discussion about them, when they did the new ordinance, and Councilwoman Heller was probably the one that was really trying to get it changed, and she was kind of ignored. So hopefully this time, everybody can get together, and we can just get a decent ordinance. But I don't know how to tell you to enforce it, though, because some people are shooting them off at 1 o'clock in the morning, they've probably been drinking since they've been shooting them off, and it's not a good thing for, you know, a neighbor to go up and talk to them. Nobody wants an altercation. So hopefully, we can get something done, and I'm glad to see that there is an effort being made. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it. And Erin, thank you for calling me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Deborah Edwards, followed by Rusty Watson.
When a governing body considers writing new laws, rules, regulations, it is incumbent on that body to consider the enforcement of those laws. The rule of law is foundational to the American system of governance. To write a law and then refuse to enforce it encourages a fundamental disregard of all laws and rules necessary for an orderly and peaceful society. Selective enforcement of laws is not an option and is often the nexus of anarchy, confusion, and distrust.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Next person, Rusty Watson, followed by Teresa Miller.
Good evening. I was here the last time you guys talked about this, too, and I live in Topeka, and I actually represent a vendor of fireworks in Topeka as well. So I'm with Jake's Fireworks. We have multiple locations across, in the city, temporary stands, and we have two buildings in the county. A lot of these things you guys talk about are stuff that you talked about last time, you know, the ability to enforce the laws, the ability to, you can sell, but you can't shoot off them. You know, of course, we are in favor of no change, you know, sell them this day, shoot them this day. It's, you know, that's kind of what we want it, but there was a compromise where they restricted the amount of days you could shoot them, but they didn't restrict the amount of days you could sell them, because it affects the vendors, it affects the organizations running the locations, lots of nonprofit groups, that's one of their biggest sellers of, you know, raising money every year, that they count on that revenue that they do for fireworks for their organizations, ball clubs, church groups, youth groups, we have all varieties of it. So the other thing is, you reduce it, you're just talking about tax cuts, it's tax revenue that you're now taking away from the city as well. So the other thing it does is, again, you mentioned, it moves everything to the county. So, you know, unless they're going to do some, all the vendors now have to just move to the city limits, and they'll just start setting all around the city limits, selling fireworks to people inside the city, they bring them back inside the city. So you lose that revenue to the county when you just move it outside the city limits. When you limit it in a full ban, it makes, you know, the previous gentleman said that he just went out to the county and his grandpa let him shoot them off. Not everybody has that option, you know? There's families that celebrate in the city, and that's the only place they have to go. They don't have someone they can call and just go out and shoot all fireworks out in the county somewhere. That's not an option. When you limit it, vendors, nonprofit groups, families with different schedules, you know, there's a multiple shoot date because families have different schedules. It's the same reason people celebrate Christmas a week early, or a week late, or Thanksgiving, because not everybody can do it at the same time. So if you limit the shooting days to one, two, or three days, the problem is, not everybody can do that. If it falls during the week, not everybody has the week off, that day off, they might have to work. If it falls on the weekend, they still might have to work on the weekend. So when you allow multiple days, that's what allows people to celebrate on that day. The other thing by limiting the days is weather. You know, 4th of July is a big time, you know, depending on the weather. You reduce it down to just two days, three days, it rains three days in a row, you just have, one, people that bought fireworks that can't shoot them off, and then what do they do with them? Just hold on to them? So I mean, it's just limited, it makes it, makes it hard. It's super popular in Topeka. We're growing every year. I mean, and that's a sign that the people of Topeka want to shoot off fireworks. I mean, they buy them in record numbers every year. So that's what they like to do, but I don't know why we would want to take that away from them. New states, Iowa, Michigan, West Virginia, Georgia, all went from no fireworks all the way open. Georgia and Michigan are 365 days a year. Shoot them off whenever you want. Sell them whenever you want, shoot them whenever you want. Iowa went from Ju, June 7th to July 8th as their shoot off. Now, some people have different times, but that's, that's where they're at.
Thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
Teresa Miller, to be followed by Johnny Jackson.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Miller, and I live in 1800 Block of Northwest Pope. I came up here the last time we were discussing fireworks. I actually even brought a piece of firework. My other half will be explaining what it did to our property, but it did some pretty good damage. It's one of those four-prong rockets that shoot up, well, when they land, they're pretty hot. One thing I would like to say is that I love fireworks, I really do, but when you have, on both side streets for me, Beverly and Proctor, we have those huge fireworks going off for four hours. And it's not just 4th of July, it's two nights before, the night after, it goes on. Why, 4th of July is the 4th of July. It's not the 5th where you can sell more products so they'll fire it off. It's not June 27th. Why are we selling these? And I can tell you why we're selling them for a week, because I sit back here, the last time we were talking about this, and somebody on the council was a friend with a guy that sold a lot of fireworks, and that guy told him, for me to make good enough revenue, I need to sell it for a week. It got passed, and I'm sure he's still happy, but the neighbors are not happy. All I ever hear anymore is revenue, revenue, revenue. What about safety? I want to hear safety coming out of people's mouths. We have, I had a neighbor behind me in my alley, not only with it going off on both ends of my street, I had a neighbor with a floor box, so those balls would drop in, they were firing them off. We picked for weeks, we were picking up pieces of those balls and stuff, and this is next to my house, and I have a big yard, it's next to my greenhouse. This stuff was in my flowerbed, it was everywhere. When the grass is dry, it causes fires. So we have to stand out there and make sure, with the hose go over our yard every single night, that they fire those things off, to put fires out, because we have so much ambers falling down on our houses. And another thing I need to bring up, we need to really pay attention when somebody asks to fire off professional fireworks. It was a prime example, I mentioned, this is the last time, I had a residential area, East Illinois Grade School over north was sold to a private Christian school. They asked to celebrate, they had professionals come in there and fire those fireworks. As I understand, they warned the block around them about it, but we didn't get, I would live three to four blocks away, we had no warning, and when the first one went off, we thought we were being bombed. Things were rattling off our walls, our floors were shaking, the neighbors were coming out on the porch looking at each other, we had no clue what was going on. And when I asked, I was, well, I gave permission for that to happen. I dove down there after they fired, there was fires everywhere, they were hurrying up and trying to get rid of those. They were messing with the hot part. That stuff's supposed to sit there overnight and cool down before they remove it. They weren't. But the residential was about 200 feet or less from those fireworks. So we need, when we do that again, we need to really pay attention to the residential, but we do need to make, just where we have fountains, and stop all this real high stuff. And the other thing I need you to do, I want to see the police reports of the firework calls that they got. I didn't see that up there, I seen the accidents and other. I want to know what the police report sent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Johnny Jackson, followed by Dana Hayden.
I had cops out twice last year for guys firing off Sparkler bombs. They're highly illegal, they're bombs. If you get on the internet, check, see what they are, you can make them any size you want to, you can throw one under a car, throw one in a car, it will blow that car up into pieces. We had, that one he's got in his hand right there, that's what's left from a Sparkler bomb. That was all in my yard. They blew holes in my fence. I called the cops out, they knew what it was. Said, oh, we ain't going to do nothing about it. The guy started to come through my gate to threaten me, but I called him out on blowing holes in the fence. I had to back him off. The one that she's got right there in her left hand, that's what we pulled out of our gutters and on my deck. Our house is about 75 feet from the alley, lies that stuff over in our yard. We had a spot about this big around burnt clear through the shingles on my garage. Nobody wants to do nothing about it. I can't claim it on insurance because it's not enough damage. So the next time it happens, I'm going to let it burn, till I get the coverage. And, you know, it's, it's just unreal, you call them out at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, this guy with the Sparkler bombs, he set them off at 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, too, he didn't care. But he won't do it for a while now because he's in prison. And, you know, it's just, it's getting ridiculous. And when I was a kid in the 50s, you could fire fireworks in the city. We had a firecracker stand right down the street from us, on Lower Silver Lake Road. But some of this is getting, start charging these people a thousand dollar fee, like some of the other cities do. And they can sell just as much fireworks the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of July as they do for a week, because they've already got their fireworks. They can sell them all in three, four days. They don't need to sell them all week. I mean, it, and just like these Sparklers, they're illegal in the state of Kansas. They have been for years. You know, them things can fragment off and kill somebody. Because the one with the, this one right here, it's still got some of the fragments in it from the Sparklers. How would you like to have 100 holes put in your body from a Sparkler bomb? And just like with the dry ice bombs, we had a neighbor set them off. You know what they are? Where you mix water and dry ice, put them in a pop bottle, put the lid on? That can kill somebody, too, if you build it up heavy enough. When that cap comes off that bottle, it can go right through a glass window. You get hit in the head with it, it'll kill you. But the cop that come out on that, boy, I know him, I'm not going to do nothing, because he knew the people didn't want to write him a ticket. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next person signed up to speak is Dana Hayden, followed by Marvin Stottlemyre.
Thank you. I would like to see a complete ban within the city limits. I think it is a public health issue, and I know that Mr. Stottlemyre, I read in the newspaper, probably has a lot of stuff to cover that I won't need to cover, but one thing that I don't know that he's going to talk about is the Helping Hands Humane Society, their intake pretty much doubles during those two weeks. So aside from us humans being annoyed and kept awake and having our car alarms go off and having, you know, clean up our yards and, because no one, no one volunteers to clean up, as we've heard, after they've shot things. I've still got scorch marks on the side of my house, and I water down the yard every day during this season. I've lived in other cities where there were bans, and yes, there are still people who are going to ignore the bans, but they stick out, and, you know, then you notice it. And instead of taking the, oh, well, I can buy fireworks, so now therefore I can shoot off a quarter stick of dynamite, you've got a little bit of leeway there, and you, you know, people that are setting off fireworks are noticed. A few years back, in fact, I wrote a letter to the editor of the newspaper here, and the internet trolls jumped on it and wanted to say how unpatriotic I am, but some of the most patriotic people among us are the ones who really have problems on the 4th of July and during those weeks, people with PTSD. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Marvin Stottlemyre.
Thank you very much.
Followed by Rennie Hall.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing this issue up. I think I may have started the ball rolling a long time ago when I spoke to my council person and said, can we please discuss this? And I'm awfully glad that you're doing it. I began this concern out of very selfish reasons. I have a dog, right? And I'm old and I go to bed early, and I like to, I like to go to bed by 10 o'clock, I like to go to sleep by 10 o'clock. A lot of my friends, however, have PTSD. This is not such a small issue for them. A lot of my friends have small children that can't get sleep for about a week in the middle of July, and when you have a bawling child that you're trying to get to sleep, fireworks become an issue. But I think even more important than our personal discomfort is the public health issue. I sent to the council, and I hope you all got them, I sent you about, what, four or five different studies that are done, published, research studies about firework damages and firework injuries. Since I sent that information, I've received some information from KDHE that last year in Kansas, there were 154 admissions to the nursing, or to emergency rooms for fireworks injuries. That's just in the state of Kansas. So it is a public health issue. Now I'd like to address the issue that it's unenforceable and that people are going to do it anyway. I'll tell you that every law on the books is broken. People break laws. Many of us, however, obey the law because it is the law. We don't obey the law because we're afraid we'll get caught. I don't slow down in the school zone because I think a policeman might be looking. I do that because it's the law. And I think that the citizens of Topeka, the vast majority of them, will obey whatever law you pass, because that's the kind of people they are. They obey the law. There will be some who won't, as in Lawrence, your example. But 100 calls in Lawrence? Is that what you said?
100.
Hundred.
Hundreds. I would take hundreds. I would take hundreds of people firing fireworks in our city over a week period. That would be so much better than now. And it must be, and I would, I would suggest that we have law enforcement here, they could probably answer that question. I think it would be much easier, it seems to me, although I'm not in law enforcement, I think it would be much easier to enforce a ban than to enforce other regulations. Because that's going on everywhere. But if you have a ban, it becomes very obvious. There are only going to be a few, maybe 100, maybe several hundred. But over a period of a week, hundreds, not so bad. So I encourage you to consider this, and thank you for considering it. And thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person signed up to speak is Rennie Hall.
Oh, pardon me. My maiden name, Noigebauer, I don't see what you do with that. I go by Hall now. I got a little shook up by the third person just talking about how absolutely, incredibly serious some of these bombs and fireworks are. So I just thought of small children, dogs, houses, and damage. Anyway, that is not my comment starting now. I appreciate Karen letting me know about the hearing. Just next time, give me more than five days' notice because I procrastinate, as you know. I'm texting you about how I get my comments in and writing it up here. And I don't know if I can read my writing. But I do have some interesting points that I wish you'd indulge me. And I thank you very much for letting me speak. We live in an age, and my name's Renee, and I've, I'm originally from Lawrence. I'm real proud of what they're doing there because I'm definitely against fireworks. It's not going to encourage me to move back because I've settled here and looked here 36 years. I graduated from Washburn and I stayed. I own a house in Kenwood, right down the street from Potlin, closer to downtown. There are a lot of neighborhoods. And I've lived in my home for 17 years in Kenwood. Beautiful neighborhood. Very close together, I might let you know that. We live in an age in our world and country where almost daily we hear the word rights in various contexts, usually it's people's rights being expressed or oppressed. However, one I have observed that we don't hear much of about recently is one in our city code and ordinance that applies. I'm sorry, I couldn't find it. City, I know it's there. Citizens of Topeka all possess the right to peaceful possession. Now, what does that mean, councilpeople? I may not have the exact definition on it. But in my opinion, it seems to us that that means us citizens should all have the right to live in Topeka, reside in our homes, our neighborhoods, without the fear of being assaulted, searched, abused, injured, or otherwise arrested, taken capture unless law justifies it, or have our peace disturbed while we're in our homes with our families, eating, sleeping, recreating, et cetera. To me, once a year in July, that peace is greatly challenged in Topeka when fireworks go on sale and when they're allowed to be discharged, two separate issues there, day and night, from July 1st to the 4th, within city limits. And we all know and we all testified, they don't stop there. For somewhat, for some of us, especially the elderly, the sick, the dying, and we have hospitals right near us, children, pets, veterans, those with anxiety, depression issues, are, these very powerful, loud, popping, booming objects cause us, those I mentioned, our problems with our bodies, our minds, those we live with or near us, seemingly constant barrage of loud, scary, harmful noises and pollution and trash in our city and her streets and yards. They are all very annoyingly hazardous and we all hold our breath, hoping and praying that no one gets killed. And that's what struck me. Injured, seriously malign during this time of this annual frenzy. Some I've talked to have very real fears that some of these items that are fire will land on their houses and do substantial damage and threaten their lives, or those they love. People who fully delight in doing fireworks seem to morph into these wild creatures at this crazy time in July. They call them pyromaniacs. They seem so self-absorbed in this activity and seemingly have no regard for anybody who lives around them, no matter how they feel about it, because they don't even ask. No dialogue there. They say, it's my right. I'm one of those individuals who really does care, really does care about my fellow neighbors, the city, my fellow citizens in Topeka in a very real and deep way. I operate daily on the mad principle, and please don't laugh. It does mean make a difference. I honestly attempt, with God's help, every single day to make a difference in the lives of others and go out of my way to do so honest. This I got from my daughter. She was on her way that summer to becoming a nun. She's serving in De Sable in Jerome. It says, your calling, where your passions, your calling is where your passions meet the world's needs.
Ms. Renee, your time has expired. If you could wrap up your statements.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just jump to the end. What I was gonna propose, besides everybody said about the enforcement and the bans and all that, I'm proposing what I've read on the internet about what some other mainly European countries done. U.S. cities didn't make a show on the internet. And what they've done just for their New Year's Eve celebration is they've gone out of their way to, from years now up to current, established fireworks-free zones. And I don't know how the nuts and bolts of that works, but I love the idea. And I've expounded on it, that if I'm in our neighborhood, there's people, there are elderly, the children, the hospitals or whatever, the school that I have right around the corn meadows, we meet a criteria and people can opt out and say, our zone, our neighborhood, our block is firework-free because we have these kind of criterias and we've met them and we've met the eligibility.
Thank you very much for your statements.
Thank you.
It is 8:16. The body typically takes a recess for five minutes after 8 o'clock. Would the body like to recess and reengage in the discussion, or would you like to continue? Continue? We'll have discussion and then we'll recess. Happy medium. Councilwoman Clear.
Because I'm gonna bust if I don't get to say this, so I'm gonna, that's why I want to continue. Okay, so I think fireworks are out of control. And I like the one man's, definitely, I think they're ridiculous. I've never liked the 4th, and I always thought I was a little alone in that until I got all the emails and I went, yeah, I'm not alone. I'm gonna disagree with Deputy Mayor Jensen. There was 50 phone calls in Lawrence about fireworks last year. None were on the 4th. 38 of them were throughout the year, 12 was in June. The ones that did get called, they didn't know they weren't supposed to shoot them off. They didn't know there was a ban. The people that live in Lawrence know there's a ban, so they don't shoot them off. I live across from the football field. Guess where everybody shoots off their fireworks? Dang football field. I can't hear my TV. I have to buy drugs for my dogs because they go, you know, it just drives them crazy. And I don't think the revenue is worth the torture or the torment to our people that have PTSD, to our animals. I don't think that's worth it. I've gone back and forth. At first, I thought, well, they're too large. You know, maybe we need to regulate how large you can, I don't even know what it's called, how large you can blow off, blow them up. And then I thought, you know, shorten the selling time. One day, shoot them off one day, be done. And then I thought, no, let's just keep them on the ground. But now I'm like, let's just ban the things. Because I don't think, I think, I agree with the one person that said, if they're banned and you hear them go off, the police are gonna be able to find them easier than if they're, you can only shoot off so loud of ones. But then who's gonna decide which one's loud? And I know Lawrence has about one officer that does this, and they take them and they put them in a dumpster and they water them down and they're done with them. So I just don't think, out of all the emails and all the calls I have, there's any amount of money that's worth what we're doing to our citizens emotionally and mentally on that week or two, usually goes all the way up to New Year's Eve. But I'm, so I'm gonna support banning them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clear. Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Thank you. I'll be happy to send you the link to the Lawrence Journal World article where it mentions at least 200 phone calls.
Police Department.
We also called the police department and they echoed the comments from the Lawrence Journal World article. So I'm not sure where your information comes from. That's where mine comes from. So, different information. My question is, what's the position of the county? You know, realistically, it's not gonna matter what we do in the city unless the county decides they're going to make changes. Even if we ban them, somebody's gonna set them off. They're gonna be long gone before the police have time to respond to that. People are still gonna be mad because we've banned something and it's not gonna be effective. I do agree that it will change. Some folks will stop firing off fireworks because it's now not legal, most people are not gonna pay that close attention. You know, we made changes to the sound ordinance a number of years ago with regard to car stereos. And let me tell you how ineffective that change has actually been at creating real change in our community. So I would really be interested in maybe either getting a position statement from the county, or, you know, if we talk about what do we need to do to change the type of fireworks that are really available in our community, perhaps that is a conversation with the county. Maybe the ones we have that they're allowing to be sold all around are too loud. But making a change inside the city limits without partnering with them, I just can't foresee that actually realistically creating the effective change that people want. You know, sound travels a great distance. So even if only five people in the city are firing off big two-inch fireworks that go up through 100 feet and make a loud noise, it's just the same as if they're firing it off all across the city because you're gonna hear those. And people are gonna be upset that the ban we passed is not effective. Thank you.
The gentle comments, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I was planning to hand out a summary sheet that I had done and instead Liz handed it out earlier. So you should have had at your place, just a front and back, page and a half. I, and I wanted to share it with you, without taking a position, what I did was posted on my Hiller for Topeka Facebook page and invited people to comment. And further, it got shared out to the Kenwood neighborhood, because obviously there are people interested in there, as well as on next door. I don't know what else you all saw, but I know that of just what I had out, there were over 500 views and over, probably about 75 comments, but at least 50 different commenters. So it was really, it worked. So I wanted to share with you what I learned, where there was back and forth, which there was pretty spirited back and forth on a few. It was about 50/50, passionately for and what the heck, and passionately against. The concerns, if you were gonna drill them down, was the illegal times, people shooting them off when they weren't supposed to. Illegal fireworks. One of the things that really has happened, even just in the last two years maybe, is what I call a mortars. I don't know what they are, but whatever it is that is really huge, that makes people feel like the whole neighborhood blew up, has made a striking difference in people's reactions about trying to live within that four days. And they can't be legal. Our ordinance does say you can't do commercial and also says you can't do bottle rockets, which we've heard about as well. So illegal fireworks are part of it. Metal sparklers also have been illegal for a while. Dangerous but legal flaming fireworks. The new Chinese lanterns are really scaring folks. And I think that they are legal by our ordinance right now, but they can land and still be burning anywhere. And then, of course, trash, which has come up before, people not cleaning up after themselves. A real variety, I won't go through, you can read it. In terms of some ideas, there really were a lot of ideas. One was find out where these mortars are coming from and get them squeezed out of our market. Make the lanterns illegal. Was a lot of conversation about having the police enforce better. We've heard various testimony, but people in this town believe a deal's a deal. If it's in the law, we should enforce it. If it's, if it's not, if we're not gonna enforce it, then why do we have it? So to me, that is a challenge for us to look at. In terms of enforcement, neighbors are willing to help if they know what evidence and what witnessing is needed. One person suggested that the firefighters be deputized to ticket during the fire season. One suggested publishing the names of the offenders. A couple of comments about, as somebody said earlier, checking with Shawnee County and syncing up what they're selling and what we are selling or, and legalities and so on. There were suggestions to designate public spaces for fireworks, rather than having it be citywide, look at places, congregate places to do it. There were suggestions, as Renee said, of fireworks-free zones, whatever those might be. Their neighborhood doesn't agree in Kenwood, so it's not gonna happen there. But, you know, still looking citywide. Some of her samples had around hospitals and so on as fireworks-free. Developing alternative places for fireworks. It could be that one of the reasons that people are so eager to have fireworks in town is there were some comments about how much they liked it when go forth was at Washburn. Well, everybody in the city could see those fireworks from Washburn. So kind of thinking about working with County Parks and Rec or, you know, just how to satisfy getting to see them without everybody shooting them off in their own yard, if the council wants to consider a change. There also were a couple of suggestions to make a public gathering space as a reprieve zone for people who really were, rather than have to leave town, people who are really bothered by that. So again, in-town spaces such as Washburn again, or using the river for a major in-town fireworks display so that people can enjoy it but not have it next door. Bear education was another suggestion about the rules about safe fireworks as well as enforcement expectations if we were gonna ramp it up. There was one person who turned in information about the state of Pennsylvania, which actually adds a surcharge, adds a 12% tax on top of the firework sales to help pay for extra enforcement and costs to the city or to the communities because of firework sales. And then the gentleman from Jake's already pointed out, I had one contact from one of the churches. It's a nonprofit who raises a substantial amount of money for youth programs. And so have to keep that in mind overall. So you've got the list. If we were going to make a change, I think we all need to realize that we need to either decide on doing some short-term things and make that decision really soon. They start selling the permits soon. People are planning on that income and that business. And people are planning their family visits and vacations as well. We had talked about doing this in the fall. By starting right now, to make major changes, it's up to the body, of course, but it might take us some time and conversation so that we would be better ready to assign it to Public Health and Safety or whoever, to really monitor and work on it this year for the future year and make, again, if there were some short-term things we wanted to do to change in the ordinance or to change enforcement, to focus on that. Those are just some suggestions, but really, this should all be decided, if it's not already, by no later than the 1st of March, I would think, what we're gonna do this year.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I really appreciate what Councilwoman Hiller did. I was at a neighborhood meeting last night and got similar range of comments. One of the things, one of the things I struggle with, though, and I, I understand, you know, a couple of dogs that also don't like the fireworks. And I do not have any neighbors with PTSD that I know of, but I feel for those people who do. My issue is, in my neighborhood, it's by Lake Shawnee, for one. We do not want go forth to move out of District Four, by the way. So I would not be a fan of that. Great place out there, by the water, so nothing can fall, nothing can start a fire there. But for us, the 4th, particularly the night works, it's a time when our whole neighborhood kind of gets together. I mean, you have, it's almost the most community event of the year because it's summertime and it's, so I guess what I'm struggling with is how do we not kill something that's a neighborhood celebration where people get together while at the same time preserving the rights of people? I believe that the lady said peaceful possession. So that's what I'm struggling with. How do we balance this? Because I agree, sometimes they definitely get out of, get out of hand. On the other hand, how do we preserve the, you know, the community event that the 4th has become for many of us? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of brings up some memories, and I'm glad you brought up the car stereos, is bikes on Kansas Avenue sidewalks and tobacco.
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of brings up some memories, and I'm glad you brought up the car stereos, is bikes on Kansas Avenue sidewalks and tobacco possession by those under 21. These are kind of those laws that we can't enforce. And I think if people stop firing their fireworks at 10:00 p.m. and then we just enforce the law, I think we'll solve a lot of our problems here. I have the same amount of things as you do with the kids and the dogs and the whole thing. And yeah, I'm getting old now, Marv, and I like to go to bed early now. And but tell Nicholas we're trying to work on something and we'll get it figured out. But yeah, I think that if we can just figure out a way to just, instead of coming up with new laws, is just enforce the laws that we have. And if everybody shut down at 10 o'clock, it would make our city a happier place during that time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'll kind of give you my position on this and then I have some questions for the chief as well. Sorry, Chief. My, I hate fireworks. I love public fireworks displays at Lake Shawnee, what was Go-4th, and I enjoy that. I love the celebrations and balancing these. I do hate that I have to medicate my dog. I do hate that. I do have friends who have PTSD that it has affected. And I do hate 2:00 in the morning when I got to get up and go to work, you know, thinking that World War III is starting again, reality. And I do tie some of these to the more recent mortars that are on there that are louder, more explosive. Fundamentally, you're not going to see me support a complete ban of fireworks. I don't think that is, I don't want to take that away. If I had my, you know, if I was writing policy, it would be that they can be sold the first through the fourth, and you can shoot them at 8:00 in the morning on the fourth till midnight on the fourth, and that's it. And that would be my position. That being said, Chief, if I can ask you, talk to me a little bit about what the department and Patrol's policy is on enforcement and then give us a realistic, you know, real-life explanation of the challenges that you do face in trying to do that. Because I, they're having laws on the books that are unenforceable or just make your jobs harder. I don't think we need to recreate that.
Right. Well, it's not that we don't enforce the law. We take enforcement action whenever possible, and most of those are in response to a call for service that has been made. The thing to keep in mind is that weekend of the Fourth of July is a very busy, it's warm, and there's a lot of activities going on in the community. And so there's just a lot of calls for service in general. And so what happens when a call for, a firework call comes in, there is a prioritization system for calls as to receive, and so it will get placed on a priority list. Again, it depends on the type of firework call and stuff like that. If it's believed to be an illegal firework that has gone off, then that call does receive a higher prioritization, and we try to respond to that one quicker. And so it's not the fact that we don't enforce the ordinances, it's the fact that call load at that time that those calls come in. It is true, on the Fourth of July, the calls seem to go down because most people realize that the Fourth of July is the Fourth of July. Calls that we really respond to would be on like the 5th and 6th of July and then at the front end, the 2nd and 3rd timeframe. So again, it's not that we don't enforce the ordinances, we do write citations, and most of those are citation offenses, they're not arrestable offenses, they're citations. Again, unless there's an illegal firework and then that becomes a criminal charge and it's again another process at that point. So I don't know if I answered your question.
No, yeah, thank, yeah, that answered. I think the only other, only other question I would have would be the question of a ban came up. Does that, if it was a true ban, does that make it easier? The question that I think been brought up about if it was a ban, that it would be easier for you to do your job, is that accurate and accurate?
Well, I think a ban would make it more definable as to when the violations take place. Again, I wouldn't have any statistics to be able to provide you that because we haven't had a ban. We've been able to sell fireworks for almost a week, give or take. It's gone back and forth over the history of time. But there was a gentleman that was up here who said, you know, when he grew up, you couldn't buy fireworks in the city limits and you couldn't fire off fireworks in the city limits. And that's how I grew up. And so one day of the year, Fourth of July, we would go out to the county and that's where we'd buy our fireworks and that's where we'd ignite them. But again, if the county, I think it's a city and a county partnership that has to come together to figure out, to come up with a clear-cut plausible solution to the situation.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Thank you. Chief, while you're up here, talk about how difficult it is or how easy it is to sort out who is actually the person who gets the citation when a firework incident is reported. What's the timeframe it takes to actually respond where you could realistically expect to catch someone?
Well, a lot of times on firework calls, by the time we get there, the event is stopped. There are certain situations where people are still firing off fireworks, sometimes officers observe them themselves, and then sometimes through talking with individuals, witnesses or what have you. So enforcement action, like I said, does take place when we're able to determine a violation that does take place. Again, we're talking about timeframe by the time we get there because of prioritization of the call, any amount of calls at that timeframe. And so it becomes difficult in taking enforcement action. But again, it's not because we don't take it, it's because of circumstances surrounding the situation.
Any idea, just off the top of your head, on average, how many of the calls that would come in for something like that you might be able to actually ticket someone for?
No, but I have already contacted some of my staff that, you know, we'll get together, numbers of citations that we have written over the last couple of years, the number of firework calls that we have responded to, and I can get that information to the city managers for distribution.
I'm wondering if of all the calls that come in, 10%, 25%, 50%, we're actually able to ticket somebody on based on the amount of time it takes to respond and other calls and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I honestly couldn't give you an answer what that is.
No worries.
Like I said, we can get numbers together for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Hiller.
One brief clarification, I think I remember this accurately from when we worked on this before. When you look at the descriptions of bans of fireworks here, I think one of the ways that communities build in, letting people use small stuff like fountains and appropriate sparklers and the little stuff like the smoke bombs and the chickens and stuff that you put down on the ground, is in the definition of what is a firework, what is fireworks and what's not. So I think in some communities, and I'm sure we can do it, if people wanted to disallow the stuff that goes up in the air, but allow some of the smaller things, it would still be considered a ban. So that's an option to consider. And just for full disclosure, I love fireworks myself. Lots of people are concerned about it, so I think it's responsible for us to look at it.
Councilman Mays.
Would it be possible to ask a question of Rusty, the gentleman from Jake's Fireworks?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And since you were the only person who's spoken in favor of fireworks, you're now the resident expert. Could you speak a little bit about the classification of fireworks? I mean, as the discussion seems to be turning from time to time towards, you know, we hate these kinds of fireworks, but these ones are all right. Could you kind of explain a little bit of that and how it affects your sales?
So like metal sparklers you guys talked about, they're illegal. We don't sell them, nobody in Topeka sells them. So whether you regulate, I mean, they're already regulated, like they're going to other places, bottle rockets, can't sell them here, they're illegal. So if they're buying them, they're buying them out of state Missouri, Atchison. I mean, there's so many people, they just, Atchison right there, they go across, they get bottle rockets, they get all that kind of metal sparklers, that kind of stuff. So to regulate that, I mean, you already are. I mean, you're not making them legal. Sky lanterns, same thing, we don't sell them. No one does. If they're selling them, they're selling them illegally. As far as like the mortars and stuff, there's nothing that's changed in years about the types of fireworks, you know, 500 gram multi-shot cakes artillery shells. They're the same thing that we've sold. You know, our number one selling artillery shell is called the Excalibur, and we've had it for, since I've been there for 17 years. It's the number one then, it's the number one now. It's the same thing. So I think they're just more popular. You hear them more, so therefore you think they're something different or new, but it's really not. It's just a matter of that many more people buying the product and shooting them off. So there's been nothing new to the market as far as this is now here where five years ago it wasn't. Or this is, you know, nothing's changed as far as new fireworks and nothing's changed as far as like the fireworks that are banned, you know, some of the stuff, you know, the sparkler bombs, that's just, I mean, that's just people buying metal sparklers somewhere else. Because we only sell the paper sparklers and the bamboo wooden sparklers, and you can't do it with those. The product that, the product that is contained in the metal sparklers is not in those other kinds of sparklers, so you can't do it. I mean, we have people that come in and they'll fill up their basket full of sparklers and get to the front, and I'll literally tell them, you like sparklers, but you can't do what you want to do with that. So you can buy them if you want, but you're going to be disappointed because you can't do it. So I mean, there's, you know, as far as like, you know, we try and educate as much as possible. We have display videos in our stores that talk about how to properly shoot fireworks, how to properly dispose of fireworks. We have them on our website, we have them, we hand out brochures and other places about, you know, this is, you know, safety regulations, that kind of stuff. Some cities, some states require us to hand out a city ordinance with, you know, the purchase of fireworks. So we do that in lots of different places. So as far as like that product.
Can I ask one follow-up question also? We've also heard about the duration of time that we're selling fireworks, and it was mentioned earlier that that was put on there. Could you kind of explain a little bit, and I know it's not reasonable to ask for specifics, but could you maybe tell us a little bit about what percentage of sales you have just in the couple of days, like maybe the first through the fourth versus the 27th through the first?
So when the change was made in 2011, it definitely affected sales in the temporary locations within the city limits. People, people didn't buy during, they didn't not buy, but not as many people bought during that time because they couldn't shoot them off, so they didn't go and buy them. The problem with regulating the amount of time you can sell is there's only so many people that you can have come through your tent and through your building. We try and get people to come out on the 27th, 28th, 29th, when it's not as busy, because if everybody waits till the last few days, it's, talk about chaos, chaos in the tent because there's so many people inside the tents trying to get them. You know, if you got bad weather for the first three or four days and no one goes shopping, they're all, they're still going to buy them, they just wait. You can't physically help that many people, you can't educate the people. You know, I like to walk around with people and ask them for questions. You have questions, that's not, you can help them when you have more time. And that's what a big thing for our company is, generating business early, so that way you have the ability to talk to people, help people, let, make, you know, find what they want. Don't go buy something that they thought was a fountain, but it turns out it was something that goes way up in the air. You know, that's, that's the thing that we drive is early sales for that reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen, as we're wrapping up.
I just had one small thing. This is to our, either maybe the city manager or attorney. Got this law here that says that adult supervision is required at all times, it is lawful for any person over the age of 18 to possess and discharge permitted consumer fireworks. And then it says it shall be unlawful for any person, let's see, so I mean, person under the age to discharge fireworks without adult supervision. So can that give us any leverage on maybe shutting down some of those late-night firework incidents that go into the, into the night? Because they are minors. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Cohen, where are you reading from? Just so I can, our ordinance?
I'm guessing that's what it is, it's right, yeah.
The only thing I'll add real quick is that just as we look at when certain, if we're doing any type of enforcement activity by law enforcement and we approach that, I think that it ends up becoming, if we can determine what, who is doing the discharge of the fireworks, that plays into it as well with regards to the age. But I think in the long run, really looking at if they can respond to the call and determine anyone that has been shooting or discharging the fireworks, and then step it down relative to the age of the individual that we're dealing with. And so oftentimes, that's, it's kind of like a progression type thing from what I remember.
Okay. Well, at this point, I think that we have various options that have been presented to us, that staff is now tasked to provide back to the council some options for us to start discussing. Councilmember Hiller made a point about the expediency in which we are to at least look at some basic regulations if this is what the body will decide to pursue. Again, tonight was a discussion item. Appreciate everybody that came out to speak and share their concerns and very importantly appreciate all the feedback and the work that the council and the staff have put into this presentation. At this point in time, it is 8:46, we will hold a five-minute recess and then come back to go through announcements, final public comments, and our executive sessions. I was given the opportunity for one of our council members to join us. Could you please, we're going to start with announcements. So that being noted, we are now in the point of the agenda to have the announcements. City manager, what announcements do you have?
Well, I have a few good ones, Mayor. First one I want to do is recognize the city is now, the city of Topeka is among top 11% of cities recognized for open data efforts. This work has been done well before me. This is work that our staff has been doing for quite a while. Topeka ranked in the top 11% of 117 cities that applied and received an honor roll certification recognition for 2017, but the only city in the state of Kansas, one of five cities nationwide to receive this designation. Specifically, Topeka received a 48% rating on the certification scale, just 4% shy of reaching the silver level, which is the next most important step we need to make. The certification process will aid the city in evaluating its performances and practices and outline short-term and long-term improvements that are needed in order to bring us to that silver level. So we're excited about 2018 in order to make progress along those lines, and are already identifying what steps we need to do in order to make that silver level. Also, a reminder, the CIP bus tour is Saturday, February 10th, from 10:00 to noon. Email, it says budget or me if interested. Also, January, since January 1st, 2018, street crews have responded to a total of six snow and ice events. Total cost to manage these events and labor, material and equipment is $301,103. We've used a total of 2,317 tons of de-icer and expended 1,926 labor hours. And also- And also, a last note is that on, uh, February 13th, parking staff are meeting with the NOTO businesses to review findings of the NOTO parking study. That's all I have, your man.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to go ahead and congratulate the group that has been working on the East Topeka Learning Center. We had a meeting recently. The school is set to start going forward January of 2019, which may seem like a long time, you know, from now, but it's something that is moving pretty fast. Um, there's a lot of engagement of the community surrounding it, and it was interesting to hear the discussion about how the pace of developing the curriculum for that education center is going to be extremely fast because it's going to be based on the demands that we have on employers in our community. So that is very progressive, very exciting. As we talk about Momentum 2022, and we're talking about reaching those goals of cradle to career, having those centers is very important so that individuals can go ahead and achieve great paying jobs. Um, again, another shout out to the team that helped us with the What Works. It is an honor. I was in Harvard doing the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and one of the things that they were talking about was how important it was to have that transparency component. And for our city to be recognized as gold is extremely important. Um, so thank you for everybody that has been working on this. I'm very proud of our community. I also got a chance to participate this morning in the Kansas Sexual and Domestic Violence Coalition Conference. And it was wonderful to see that we, as the city of Topeka, held the conference here in our, in our capital. And we had over 50 individuals from different parts, going as far as Great Bend and Garden City. We're here learning about, about prevention techniques for individuals to prevent issues of sexual and domestic violence. And it's incredibly important. I mean, a few years ago, I was talking about that, came in dressed in teal, and it was a subject that was not comfortable to address or to even approach. However, now, in the, in the wake of the Me Too, uh, you know, situation that we're having nationwide, it is so important that we're able to empower people to speak up and understand where the boundaries are so that everybody is respected in our communities. Huge thanks to TPD and the Sheriff Department, all of you that braved the cold with me on Saturday at the Polar Plunge. It was a one-of-a-kind experience. My hands were purple by the time that I left, but it was all for a worthwhile cause. Um, the, the Polar Plunge is done in honor of Special Olympics. And I don't know what was a better treat, to be able to judge the costumes or to see the amount of beautiful people that were there, uh, celebrating and, and just enjoying that day and raising funds for a very special cause. Another shout out to our road people. It was kind of interesting, city manager and I, I think it was Monday, uh, had a meeting and I said, oh my gosh, what happened with the roads? They're still, you know, in disrepair. And we had an unexpected amount of snowfall. We did not expect that. Of course, it was Super Bowl Sunday. Nobody was there, the individuals that were working were on call. Day after, the roads are absolutely wonderful. You could drive everywhere. And a lot of constituents have been giving feedback with regards to that. And it was really encouraging today to hear how city manager has also worked with staff. And they're going to have a seven-to-seven patrol going on because we're expecting some snowfall tonight so that we can continue maintaining the conditions of the roads. So thank you for your leadership on that. Um, in addition to that, finally, I had a great meeting with the concerned community citizens, talking about our public safety. And my team was talking about de-escalation. And I tell you what, one of the most enriching processes that I've had in this is the fact of being able to sit down and learn a little bit more as a deep dive. And this is a deep dive with regards to our police department is doing. I'm excited that most of you got to hear, uh, a lot of the training courses today. Chief, thank you for, for making sure that we had that presentation. We continue working to improve relationships in our community, and I think that the level of transparency that we're demonstrating in this process is, is something that has given me hope as we continue to work with our community. So those are all my comments. We proceed to Mr. Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, as many of you all know, Punxsutawney Phil saw his shadow, and that was demonstrated on Sunday yet again, and probably will be more. But the silver lining in all that is, wow, what a great team we have that gets out there and braves the cold to clean up all that stuff. Um, it's, it's not easy work, and I just wanted to, you know, echo the comments of the mayor and, and give a great shout out to those folks. Because that, I mean, it is really, if you talk about what keeps our community going uh, through the winter, having the ability to move around town is kind of important. Thank you very much. Have a great week, everybody.
Councilman Mays.
Uh, I would echo that. Kudos to the city for, uh, for the snow removal and the last, uh, last event. Um, I also wanted to recognize a couple of local businesses that have made significant investments in our community. I had the opportunity, uh, I was invited by a friend to tour the new Federal Home Loan Bank building up on the hill. Uh, it's beautiful. If you get a chance, I would recommend checking it out. Um, and then also in District 7, we, uh, had the, the grand opening of a, of a multimillion-dollar investment in Genesis Health Clubs, um, which employs about 200 people in the, in the city of Topeka. And it was, uh, it's, it's really nice also if, if you're a member there and you don't attend the Southwest one, maybe you should check it out. It's a, it's a really nice facility. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, mayor. I was just looking for a, a confirmation on the CIP bus tour started at the Holiday Building or the City Hall. Because I think maybe the original invite said, I just want to make sure I show up at the right place. And then I see that the committee and board lists are out. And I'd like to give my fellow council people a challenge. These committees that do not bring anything to, um, the governing body, how about those people who are on there, and I'm on two of them this time, that we come and we just give you a little brief report about, in my case, what's going on with the Kansas Expo Center Advisory Board? Um, you know, the county did make a decision to proceed to renovate the Expo Center this last week. And that was kind of important because we, as an advisory board, have been playing up, you know, till this very big decision for them. Nothing's been settled officially on what designs or anything. But they, uh, they wanted to have a little bit more time before they chose that specific, whatever it was, decision that they wanted to do. So I challenge some of these other, uh, some of you other council people, tell us what's going on in that board or commission. And I plan on learning a little bit about the Shawnee County Medical Society Health Access. I have no idea what it is, but I thank you, and I'm eager to learn. So, I think I'm there, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser.
Uh, just real briefly, I just want to give a shout out to Topeka's own Gary Woodland for, uh, putting the capital city on the national stage. Um, I, I know that he, luckily enough, his mom and dad and sister are all out there to, to witness that. So congratulations, C. Wood.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I wanted to mention the, uh, committee chart and congratulate deputy mayor on that. I think the spread looks good. We've got a strong council this time, too. I think for those of you who are new, that we'll end up getting, um, a list from Liz that shows not only those, um, assignments, but all the other boards, various of us are on other boards and assignments, too. And so that's kind of insightful to know even where somebody is. Wanted to give kudos to Public Works and all the other departments that were involved in the CIP Open House yesterday. Well, the weather, I think, limited it to maybe more staff than visitors, but there were a lot of public folks there, and, and they really do a great job with it. So it was really informative to the constituents that I had that went, so. And last, we got, um, learned today from Grace Med. Everybody's wondered what's going to happen with Dylan's. And, um, Alice Weingartner sent a memo out to a few of us. They actually have a contractor that they're about to sign on and expect work to start this month on the renovations. They hope to have a majority of the, the core work anyway done by midsummer because they've got some new contractors that they want to get in there. Um, they are still, however, somewhat under 500,000 toward their goal, short of their goal, of their $3.9 million goal. So if anybody knows anybody who has any money, send them over to Grace Med. But that's, that's very exciting, and people have really been looking forward to it. Thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Claire? No comment? Councilman Emerson? I have to say Henderson for Ms. Ortiz.
I was just going to mention, I, I hope Ms. Ortiz gets the feeling better because I, it's hard to go an entire night with my name being pronounced correctly. So, uh, just two things very quickly. First of all, the East Topeka Learning Center, that bid's actually this, I believe it's Thursday, the, the 8th, if that's Thursday, that's the day they take bids. So, uh, I attended actually a, a pre-bid conference over there a few weeks ago, and it was great. There were probably about 100 people there. So I think the, um, yes, Jado that's actually doing it is, I think, going to get some great, great bids on that. Uh, the second thing is tonight's epic struggle, the two high schools in my district, Holland Park and Shawnee Heights, went to one and have kids in the other. So there are a big basketball game there tonight, so I'm missing that, but wish them both luck. It's probably over now. Thanks.
Councilman Baria.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to follow up on what you said about, uh, the conference you attended with regards to domestic abuse and, and, and I want to acknowledge that in Topeka, they've always had a great history of addressing that through the programs offered by the YWCA. I think they have longstanding in that field. Um, I'd like to, uh, compliment the chief on his presentation tonight. And like I said, uh, chief, uh, community outreach has always been a key point for me as long as I was a police officer and continues to be. I think you're doing an excellent job in doing that. You're putting yourself out there, not expecting them to come get you. And I think that's very different and key to your success. I want to announce that, uh, as part of that is that the Topeka Police Citizens Academy, I believe it starts this week, February 8th. So that's another opportunity for people to come and learn about the police department. And the VIP program, the Volunteers in Police Work, that academy starts on the 13th. So again, yet another outreach effort. And if I don't embarrass the lieutenant back there, uh, Lieutenant John Tremble, he has agreed to serve on a committee for me, uh, at, at my request. And I believe, again, that's another way for people to see the police department and how they serve in many capacities, other than those that sometimes are just kind of focused on enforcement of the law. But they actually are part of the community and look at other aspects of our needs in the city. So I thank you for that. And, um, that's one last thing. Thank you.
All right, we must be now proceed with the public comments section. Mr. Henry McClure.
All right, I know you're loving this. Thank you, Henry McClure. Thank you, governing body. Every developer wants to figure out how to leverage all the resources at our fingertips. And I see the economic development money, the sales tax money, as a great opportunity to leverage relationships that I've got and some other developers that I've got relationships with. the process has got to be fair and create an even playing field for everybody in the community. I, I really liked what you said earlier about the, the governing body's role in, in this because you've literally made yourselves developers, controlling the purse strings. And you should be broke. You shouldn't have any money in the bank for carryover. You should be broke today. Every, every year, you should be broke because you put your money, what you didn't give in incentives, you put in infrastructure back in the town. You've got to, we've got to make our town better, and we do it through infrastructure. If you read, uh, the last, uh, study we did, the Market Street Study, I got to read it. I don't know if it's top secret, but it says, hey, quit complaining about your town. Accept that you're not growing, and take what you got and made it back, make it better. Well, you make it better by having infrastructure and roads out ahead of us. The reason College Hill sits there is because I got bought out of the Commerce Park. I had 200 acres I was trying to develop, and I wanted to be, I wanted to use the, the relationships I had with the third largest mall owner, one of the founders of the third largest mall owner. And I said, let, let us stay in the park. Let us leverage our relationships. I wanted 49th Street paved, and I wanted an exit off the 75. We even paid for the study. Let us, let, we got to figure out how crazy guys like me can contribute. So I actually, uh, if you look, and look at the thing I sent you guys, we could have had the roads there, the interchange, and we could have saved all the money on the land that we didn't need to buy, and we could finish the, uh, the Commerce Park. It could have been, you know, it would, it would have looked better. If you're going to have, if you're going to give a guy $50,000 to go to downtown Topeka to renovate a building, give him $50,000 to go to College Hill. Let's put $50,000 in infrastructure and let's finish what we've got. But you should be broke. And what I'd like to see, I've had hundreds of people come up to me and say, when are you going to get that road from 37th to, uh, to, from 37th Engage out to 41st and Wanamaker? And we bought the land, we clear cut it, we're trying to get some action going, trying to get some leverage out of you guys. But take your money, be broke, put it all into one project. Go over to the Commerce Park and finish that off, or go over and let's finish Lawrence Bay. Let's get an access out to all the lots that sit out there. Let's put a road out there. And then private people get to develop land. Think of all the rich land. It will be the best south road, east-west trafficway. That's all I got. I'll come back to you guys with a deal, but let's get the money spent and put it in infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Deborah Ed.
Can I start this here, paper? Do I each, when does my time start? After everyone gets the paper or?
I can start taking my paper.
Okay. Hey, what, what you have in your hands are the three deed restrictions that were attached by the city to Sumner property, the, the property that is Sumner School at the time that it was sold. Um, nine years ago, the, the city of Topeka owned Sumner Elementary School. Um, they sold the building to the current owners, and those are the rules, regulations, laws that were attached to the contract. I'm president of the Ward Mead NIA now, so I won't tell you, I won't say what I said nine years ago when I stood before this body. You can ask me afterwards and I'll tell you. But what I'm here tonight to ask you is to please tell me what myself and other members of the Ward Mead NIA are supposed to answer people who ask us, why did the city not help you in your lawsuit against the South Side Christian Palace? Why did you have to get a private attorney to enforce rules, laws, regulations that the city wrote when they sold the property? We don't know how to respond. So once again, I would ask you to tell me, how am I supposed to respond to the question, why does the city not help you? Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ed.
So no answer, huh? What I told, what I told the, the city council nine years ago, beware, the Trojan horse stands on the shore. The seated city council at the time sold the property anyway.
Next person signed up to speak is Mr. Cody Stappler.
Hi, please, you can like pass around and then maybe we'll take them. Hi. Uh, my name's Cody. Um, I'm speaking on behalf I'm speaking on behalf of Sarah tonight, and I'm here to deliver some more copies of the two books we wanted to encourage each of you to read. You already have a couple of copies of these, but there are four more copies of Michelle Alexander, The New Jim Crow, Madison Caritrations in the Age of Colorblindness, and then there's one copy of Bryan Thivnton's book, Jeth Moti: A Story of Justice and Redemption. Both of these, sorry, both of these books highlight the issue that we face nationwide in the so-called justice system. These are the kind of realities that they help us face. Youth of color make up 59% of Kansas's imprisoned youth and 50% of detained youth. Obviously, this is disproportionate to the number percentage of youth in our color, youth of color in our state, which is 32%. 7% of Kansas's youth population are black, but they make up 37% of imprisoned youth in 2016. Kansas spends $7 out of every $10 on juvenile services, resources, incarcerating young people, and only 3% of its budget on community-based prevention programs. We know that the rate of detention, arrest, conviction, and hardness of sentencing for people of color here and around the country disproportionately affect communities of color and poverty. These issues begin in our communities with the way that police interact with our communities. Manhattan, Kansas found that the arrest rates for white people and black people for use and possession of marijuana were distinctly higher for people of color than white people. Yet, the data show that both groups use this drug at the same rate. Of course, this is just one small example, but we want you to read about these issues and consider what we can do locally to begin to effect this change. When adults are arrested, charged, convicted, and sentenced, there are long-lasting consequences for families, neighborhoods, and communities, financially, emotionally, spiritually, and community. This price extracts the vitality and possibility of thriving communities. When communities are disproportionately targeted, the costs become a barrier that affects everyone within that community, which comes an unfair burden. We are so glad that so many of you are interested in learning more and contributed to these new ideas and answers, and we look forward to hearing how these books and the other ones we gave you pulled over, one of them, are helping you understand the issues that have come up since the death of Dominique White. These in particular were sent to us from community partners in Salina, Kansas. I hope that you can see that many eyes are watching Topeka from around Kansas and around the country, and we have an opportunity to learn together and make a difference, which has positive ripple effect for many other communities who may learn while watching us. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Marty Heller.
So, before I get started, I just wanted to apologize to Chief Cochran. I didn't realize you had a presentation tonight. I would have liked to have been here for it, but I was home with my family and trying to hustle over here, so my apologies. In the last six weeks, with District Attorney Kegay's release of the body cam footage that documented Dominique White's last moments, there have been many changes in our city governance. We have a new mayor, new city council members, a permanent police chief, and much discussion about what community policing will look like going forward from Dominique's tragic death. For the first time in what feels like a long time, there have been many voices involved, including members of an increasingly frustrated public, many of whom feel these issues around community policing in a real way. We've been able to gather and put names and faces together and hear their pain, and many of you here on the council have joined us in that endeavor. Though we all recognize how painful this has been, it's been encouraging to know that many of you on this council have been willing to get out of your comfort zones and be a part of this important work. Now that we are days into Black History Month and some days removed from Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, I'd be remiss in not sharing some reminders of who he and his legacy were. Though he was often referenced as nonviolent, he used tactics that were meant to disrupt and agitate, to hold space where it was said it was illegal for him to be. He successfully organized boycotts and marches that led to desegregation and the upholding of civil rights for Black Americans countrywide. He spoke out against economic injustice, housing discrimination, racial inequity, and the Vietnam War. Having an acute understanding of the deliberate racial disparity between whites and blacks that were upheld by unjust laws, he spoke out in critique of the moderate white clergy he met in Birmingham, who questioned his methods and asked him to wait until a more convenient season to campaign for his freedom. He was harassed, beaten, and killed for what he wanted. I know that we are all generally inclined to remember him for his want for progression for all humankind, but if we are to stand together in his wake and evoke his name, then we must be willing to evoke his unflinching truths and recognize his tactics as just and with purpose. His work was a driver to freedom, and as is often said, freedom is not without cost. So, I would just encourage you on the council to please continue to step outside of your comfort zones in demanding the accountability and transparency of our police forces going forward and any necessary reforms. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we are going to recess into executive sessions. If the city attorney would read.
All right. The first motion is to recess into executive session for a period of five minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to workers' compensation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Risk Manager Shannon Langston, and myself.
Do I have a motion? Councilman Cohen, second. Councilman Emerson, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will recess into executive session for five minutes. We have ended our executive session without exceeding our five minutes, and we are about to enter our second executive session. If the attorney would read the parameters.
The second motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to contract negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Outside Counsel Kim Seaton, and myself.
Do I have a motion? Councilman Emerson?
Salute.
Councilman Cohen, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, the motion carries. We have adjourned the executive session without any action being taken. We are in need of resuming a third executive session, not to exceed 10 minutes, with the possibility of an extension and changing some rules. If the legal would read. The screen's not working.
All right. This motion is to recess into executive session for a period not to exceed 10 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to potential litigation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, and myself.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Councilwoman Heller makes the motion. Councilmember Deputy Mayor Jensen, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It is 9:58. The body sees the need to continue the discussion for an additional 28 minutes. At this point in time, we are recessing our ability to, we are changing our ability to have the meeting till 10 o'clock, so at this point in time, I would need a motion from the body to extend our time. To extend the rules.
Extend the meeting time by 20 minutes?
Extend the meeting time.
So, 10:20 PM would be your?
10:20 PM would be the time that we would end the earliest, unless we feel that we have to come back. Do we have a second?
Second.
I, Councilman Lesser, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. We proceed into executive session for an additional 20 minutes.
On the same parameters that were articulated for the last executive session.
We have concluded our executive session without any actions being taken. At this point, our meeting is adjourned.